All right, call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. We begin with public input. If anybody has any questions. I will just say for the record, we're starting the budget process tonight. And if people do take the time to come to the meeting and they want to ask a question about the budget, you don't have to do it at the very beginning. I'm happy to entertain questions during the meeting as well. Student report, Piper Kerwin, class of 2024. Give your report.
Hi, everybody. So for notable academic matters, there's New School Friday for both high school and middle school because it's Professional Development Day. And then the third quarter ends on April 5th. For notable fine arts matters, MASTERS, Much Ado About Nothing, performed on Saturday and won some awards and will be moving on to the final round, A of Boston. Notorious is performing on March 24th at Mechanics Hall for their semifinal round. Winner percussion competes in Salem on March 30th and April 7th in Dartmouth. The concert band MICCA competition is on April 6th. And the all-time band concert is on April 2nd. And the all-time chorus concert is on April 3rd. For notable athletic matters, spring sports season starts on the 18th. And the stat for student basketball game is on March 11th. For other matters, parent-teacher competitions are scheduled for March 20th. Friday, 3:08, and Monday, 3:11 is the Friday one. Mr. Spiny is the teacher of the month. And March 13th is the college fair. And DECA competes at States this weekend. And for my student work report, I want to show my habit. My handbook here, it's a painting that I did of tadpoles for my AP art course. And it's one of my selected works, which basically you have to submit five selected works with our five, like the best piece of artwork you can produce, and then a whole sustained investigation. And I think we presented about that at an earlier meeting. This is a painting that I did.
That's a package.
That's gorgeous. Thank you. And I meant it to, I tried to zoom in on, I'm focusing kind of on biology and life, and I tried to zoom in on just kind of like a life cycle that we learned from a really young age and like really zoom in on what the egg stage of that was like.
That's awesome. Are you stage managing the play?
Yes, I am.
Of course. She's also, she's being modest, because she's also won the award for both Notorious and MASTERS. Saw both of them, they were awesome.
Thank you.
Amazing. I mean, so many people did really, really well. And yeah, and then for Notorious, I haven't seen it announced, but I heard about it through Brandon, but said that Notorious did so well that you are going to be able to enter in a competition against college, didn't tell?
Yeah, so we actually entered into a competition called Boss Sings, which is like a Northeast competition that takes place in Boston. And it's between college and high school acapella groups. And so we submitted a video, and we were the only high school acapella group that got past the pre-screen. So I think it's late April, we'll be competing against like college acapella groups, which is pretty cool. So.
It's amazing. Congratulations. Congratulations. What a senior year for you that.
Yeah.
Well, amazing job. Any other questions?
Dr. Daly. So the weekend of the competition now, it's, the theater is on Friday, Saturday, and then Notorious on the Sunday.
Yeah.
There's a good number of students that are doing both, right? That'll be quite a weekend.
Ash attack weekend.
Of it all that March weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
California. Well, amazing. Okay, moving on, do we have Luckwood with us? If not, her delay is your advantage, so.
I don't see her yet. I might do the, I could do the baseball overnight trip, maybe.
What, do you want to do that or do I go to the curriculum? Do you want to do the overnight trip?
Curriculum will take a lot longer.
Okay.
So we'll try to do that quickly.
Okay. Do the overnight trip last?
Yeah, so the, you know, we had approved in a prior meeting, a trip to Connecticut. If you recall, this was one of, we talked about how far away it was.
Yeah.
They're now making that into an overnight trip, which does require the school committee to approve. They're going to be staying overnight on April 17th in Connecticut. They are playing Bedford, Mass. They're going to stay in Uncasville, Connecticut. And they're going to go to dinner and have bowling that night and play a game on Thursday the 18th at Dodds Stadium. There will be three chaperones. The cost of the trip will be deferred by the Bush's group, and then will be some fundraising to pay for the overnight trip.
Okay. And I think we've talked about that already.
Yep, and we need to vote, right?
Yeah.
Because it's overnight. I move to, that committee vote to approve the overnight trip. What was it again? April 17th? April 17th.
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Pass three zero. Okay.
Because maybe you couldn't show up in the last 30 seconds.
That was a quick one.
So.
Is Amy or not?
Why don't we just start? I'll just start it, and then she can join.
Yeah.
Because this should only take a couple.
It's all for her, then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Core measurement data collection. And again, nothing's vastly different than last year's, right?
There's not, no. And you know, technically, this is one of those things that I think we bring to school committee for approval as an extra step. I think it's really superintendent approval.
Yeah.
Which I give. But I think we've just, it's been a good additional layer of practice to have a school committee awareness. The plan that's laid out here is, there's a letter to families that is included here in your packet. There was a document. Just wanted to show the document. This is the survey itself, so no changes from the last two years. We continue to ask these questions. Oh, this is the plan, I'm sorry. We continue to ask a few additional questions. That's an opportunity she's always given us, to have some questions that are beyond what is included in the survey. And that's been very helpful to us in the past. Let me just let. Amy, how are you?
Oops. I can't talk. Bye.
I was just walking through a little bit. We just were a little bit ahead of schedule, so I just, I just started in. And Jason, are we good? Do you want me to move that?
Okay.
You're good? It's working okay? So Amy, I was just speaking to our plan, so I don't know if you want to jump in. I haven't started on this page yet. Are you able to speak at this point, or do you want me to continue?
I can't see any other thing.
Okay, I'll share this, this page here.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, it's just the data. It's the, it's the document you sent with the, the plan.
Great. Oh, yeah, that's great. I can see that. That's what I have as well on my hand.
Yep.
Welcome, Amy. Do you want to introduce yourself to the people in the room?
Sure. My name is Amy Luckwoods. I am the Drug Free Communities Grant Director over at the police department.
Great, so I just get a basic, if you just want to walk through this document, that'd be great.
Sure, so we begin the preparation back in August of just kind of reviewing the previous year's results. And I know that was kind of the kickoff where I spoke to the school committee presenting those results. And we kind of always go through the same thing every year and always give the opportunity to the schools to add, delete, or alter any of the questions, collect data that the schools might find beneficial. An example of that is Dr. Daly collects information on sleep that helped drive the school time change and all of that. But this year, we're going to move forward with the almost exact copy of last year's survey, except with one additional change, and that is to collect information on an emerging drug called Delta 8 THC, which at some point I would love to kind of speak to about as well. It's also known as diet weed or light weed. It is something that we're starting to see in nearby communities. I'm happy to tell you, we don't have any evidence of it in North Reading yet, but it is an emergent, emergent trend. And because of that, similar tool, we added Kratom onto last year's survey. We do like to look into upcoming trends in that. Another one that we added last year, I believe, was around gambling, online gambling. So the only change for this year is in the high school level, adding that question about Delta 8 THC, but otherwise, it's exactly the same. Grade six to eight will be completing it on April 12th in homeroom through their Chromebooks with guided instruction from the, from the teachers. They have a script that they use. Similar, ninth and 10th grade will do it in health or gym class from April 1st to 5th, and history class for grades 11 and 12, April 1st to 5th. I'd just like to remind everybody that all the questions are able to be skipped. The students are also allowed to start and stop the survey if at any point they just don't want to complete it. And parents are always given a preview and the opportunity through their principals to opt their student out. This year, we pre-calculated the survey responses in terms of numbers, what would be scientifically valid. Last year, this is a reminder, with the 11th and 12th, we didn't have enough responses, so we calculated that out ahead of time that I can monitor in real time. I believe that's, yeah, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Daly. You have that right there. And that is to give it a 95% confidence rate with a 5% margin of error, which is pretty much what we do year to year. The results are always calculated by an independent evaluator, and he gets them back to me quite quickly. And I'm happy to, again, give the school committee the first results of that.
We always have our end of the spectrum.
Amy, just one, one quick question.
Yeah.
As I think you noted in the, in the materials, the responses, and you said earlier, the responses on the 11th and 12th grade were very, very low last year. Did you collect them in the history class last year, or is that a change for this year?
No, that's an update, is this year. So we have a pretty clear plan for this year, and history class is a new addition. Although, I want to say several years ago, it was in a class, but I don't, I don't think it was history class. Dr. Daly might remember. I don't know. That's when we were talking about having to do it done in Power Block. But we found whenever they're kind of in front of an instructor or teacher is when we get the best results. And the teachers always remind them as well that it's anonymous.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Maybe we've saved it last for the ears.
Yeah, no, we appreciate you bringing it to us, but I think that we're on board.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, I'd love to come back at some point and educate in general just about the emergency trends we're starting to see nationwide. And again, North Reading is not on this, but I'd like to, for people to be aware of what's coming down the pipe for the next stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. I know nothing about drug paraphernalia, and you always teach me, so I appreciate the implication you provide me.
Correct. Well, Courtney, that would have been earlier.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the 2024 core measurement data collection.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Pass three zero. Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Sorry, I didn't realize we were ahead of schedule. I apologize. Thank you.
No worries.
Something, the words that I've never been spoken on Slack board.
I know. We'll see you soon.
Okay.
Bye.
Moving on, we have the presentation on curriculum adoption for K through two, early literacy, the first reading of this. So Dr. Daly, do you want to take us up?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Mr. Clean and just thank, ahead of time, Mr. Clean and representatives of our curriculum leaders who've worked on this for many, many years. They're, in a lot of ways, experts in this area. And I'll answer the question, maybe presumptively. We don't do, you know, the school committee policy around textbook adoptions, we've, with large-scale adopters that affect all students across all the schools, or at all middle school, all high school, we would be in front of you presenting the two readings. When we tweak, when we use supplemental materials, when we do some smaller curriculum changes, they've been updated in different ways. Like, for example, if there's a change or an update to a psychology textbook that affects a course or a class, that usually gets presented through the school's presentations. But when we do something at this scale that's going to impact, you know, all students, and it's really a shift, and we'll hear this here in direction and our approach, that's going to affect all students in K to two, we do a pilot. It's a long-term study that you're going to hear about, and we make our recommendations. We want to have that discussion in public with two opportunities.
I'm going to go up there just so.
Sure. So I want to thank everyone, and introduce our group. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. I want to keep the agenda moving and give you the information that I think that you'll find valuable. North Reading Public Schools went after a, looking for a new literacy curriculum. When we started the project, we started K to five. Before I get into the process itself, the shift that has been coming along, I'm sorry, this one. Has been about the, some of the, they call it the science of reading basics. And what we're trying to kind of get through is the difference between structured literacy and balanced literacy. All right? And the science of reading really is just ever-added information coming from experts studying reading, how students perform, how we can provide more rich text for them to be able to develop. It's all around the five pieces of literacy, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. I'll throw this little piece in here right now on the phonemic awareness and phonics. We already have a foundational reading program that, in our district, with foundations, K to two, and Hagerty as well, for phonemic awareness. And so what, what it gets lost in sometimes, or even as we prepare to propose a program for K to two, is it's not a one box fits all, right? North Reading Public Schools has done the most fantastic job over the past 25 years that I've been in here, using the standards to plan our process. And we always say that a curriculum is not the answer. We always use the standards. When we're looking at curriculum programs, we look for things that can give us more challenges or something that'll provide more, more opportunities for students to succeed. So when we did this project, it kind of went about looking at what we need more of, and this aligned to both the science of reading shift and where we want our students to experience in the classroom. We talked about structured literacy and what that can look like. This is a website I left on the resources page for you as well, that leads you to the Mass Literacy Guide, that's from the Department of Education, where it really sets out the core literacy block for all grades from pre-K to three. So this has been a great tool for us to look at as leaders and be able to work with our educators for professional development, especially understanding the difference between foundational skills. And I think what you're going to hear a lot more about this program tonight is about engaging with complex text and some of the written response. As we get ready to move over, I am very lucky that our district is committed. The number of educators who want to be involved in this process is plenty, but I have three very talented curriculum leaders from the three elementary schools here. The first one that's going to speak is Rosie Brennan from the Little School.
So this shows the simple view of reading, which is just that, very simple, as an equation, the main components that you need to become a reader that has strong comprehension, decoding those phonics skills, phonemic awareness, plus language comprehension, which we develop by engaging with those complex texts. This also helps us to identify students that have a weakness, difficulties in one or the other areas. As you can see from the equation, if you have a weakness in one of those, you're going to end up with a weak, weak comprehension. So that's the next slide. There we go. This is called Scarborough's Rope. It is a framework that helps to describe more that simple view of reading. It's a science-based way, guide, framework, I guess, to look at the components necessary to develop skilled reading. You can see the two main groups, the foundational skills that Mr. Clean spoke of, phonological awareness and decoding sight recognition, having students become increasingly fluent with word recognition. And then the language comprehension pieces, all described as strands of a rope. So you need all of these strands to create a strong rope. If you have a weak strand, it makes for a weak rope. So some of those important pieces in the language comprehension are background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, like syntax and prefixes, suffixes, verbal reasoning, which includes inferencing, drawing conclusions, and then that literary, literacy knowledge, it's print concepts and genres. Writing is connected to both. And so this engaging with complex text really needs to be available to all students wherever their foundational skills are, so that they can develop the ability to comprehend what they're reading.
Can I just ask? So is, what you're presenting, showing here, like, you mentioned, you call it a framework, that sort of speaks to what steps you're taking in the classroom with the students?
Yes, and sort of, it gives us a framework to use in looking for how we can provide the best curriculum experiences for children in the classroom, trying to, you know, we've done a really good job in North Reading covering all of those word recognition areas. We're just looking for ways to increase that engaging with complex text for all students to help with that. Really important.
Thank you.
And that is, and as Ms. Brennan said, the foundational skills we have solid, our MTSS is all set up off of foundations and using the DIBELS to measure progress and what we need to do. Then everything on language comprehension is part of the process. Our last curriculum that we purchased in the district was 2006. So outside of that, it's pretty dated, as far as talking about current culturally responsive, all these things that we need to have access to. And then it was up to the educators by school, by grade level, that were able to pick different materials. And this is one of the reasons why we're looking for a consistent curriculum.
Mr. Clean, one quick follow-up on that. So you mentioned it's out-of-date materials and it's had new advancements. Are there, are there any specific testing or other challenges we've seen that we're trying to address, or is it just sort of updating the curriculum?
It's updating the curriculum. It's kind of, it's really a shift of practice, and we'll get into that a little bit as far as, I'm trying to think, like, when we talk about balanced literacy, we used to talk about students doing a little bit of, it was a little bit of direct teaching, and then they would do a lot of work off of themselves. And then do different activities independently, small guided reading groups. So we'll get into a little bit of how that shift is, because there are some changes in the way we're going to be teaching as well. The other push that the state is, and it was a lot of S R funds attached to this as well, is really looking at what materials, they want to hold us accountable for what materials we're using, especially as it relates to structured literacy and making sure that we're using the most appropriate curriculum choices. Curate, head reports, all rate these. And then what they're trying to, as their communication is, you know, it will allow us to be able to look at that data better, understand what the students are seeing, and then be able to modify. It's, they consider being consistent to have over half a year of learning, and it's about 1.5 the difference between an average teacher and one of the 75th percentile. The one thing that we do know this year, and they'll be able to speak to, and it'll be like, whenever you adjust to a new curriculum, it is like being a first-year teacher, but what they say by having the curriculum, it does navigate that or balance out the experience of the educator, because the content is similar. And as I, as I stated, the state is, I just got pushed today about their, their efforts to update all the higher ed reading instruction programs, to make sure that they're, they're preparing our educators for this shift of reading instruction, and they'll have to be able to catch up with that. So with us, well, the work that we do with the early literacy and screening intervention, this was a new practice that went in this year, where we administer the DIBELS once in the fall, once in the end of the year. And then we are, we've done this forever. The state now requires us to notify families after that screening within 30 days on, if a student especially falls below the foundational level of reading. And that does allow us, holds us accountable for reading progress, for student learning and growth each year, which is something that we embrace, because we're partners with families on how we're going to go about and navigate that journey together. It does align to our best practices. It's not a big shift there. It definitely addresses the MTSS model that we have in our PS 2025. And then the other focus is how much support and time we need to be spending on literacy in the K to two, and make sure that we're picking up students as early as possible to give them as much support as early as possible. Even though reading is developmental, it's that exposure and that language comprehension that we're talking about. That's where we're really hoping to invest, to move the needle a little bit, so students can stay with grade-level text and not have to be remediated, so we can be looking how to accelerate them with grade-level text. It was the resources page, just a bunch of stuff that if you wanted to learn more about, you probably heard from Governor Healy a couple of weeks ago. She, she detailed her literacy launch as part of the budget, which included $30 million that I hope to eventually tap into someday. And then the process itself, as Dr. Daly mentioned, we started with the ELA council. All four of us were part of that, and plus a whole gaggle of other educators. And we started to look at, well, we started the science reading professional development. And then we wanted to look at the available, available high-quality instructional materials to kind of see what we would be more interested in, and to be able to look at the data to see where that would go. At, at the end of that, and I think the, the results will come up a little bit later, it was really clear that K to, K to two were really interested in moving forward with wit and wisdom and having the consistent curriculum across all three schools. I think the three through five had a few more reservations. They were a little bit more about different programs, and they weren't quite ready yet. And I want them to, this can be an organic process where we build consensus and move forward, and then make decisions in the best of student learning. And then this past year, we did a full-year pilot in all K to one classrooms, so we were able to get feedback from all classroom teachers, all three schools, K to one.
One, one quick question.
Yep.
Since we have to look at budgetary issues, is there any additional cost by not having K through five all go over at the same time?
No, not this time.
Okay.
You know, it always depends on the vendors that you work in, and some of the prices I, I haven't negotiated yet that are usually custom. So whenever you buy a lot more, you might get more. But I think that the rep that I'm working with understands where we are and how we're moving forward.
Well, I'm also thinking about like, you know, training, having to bring people to train a second time, having two different curriculums, if you're paying things for two different curriculums.
No, the PD will be constant, and there is an expense to it, but it's, it's worth And that was what we would go into. This year, we had a three-hour PD session in August. Then in the summer, the teachers volunteered, this isn't something we can do, but we created opportunities for them to work together and provide a little bit of compensation to be able to start planning and working together. And that proved to be very valuable, and the teachers were extremely appreciative of that. And then on September 15th, we did make all the K one teachers available for a whole day professional development. And then the leaders network, and then also offer office hours. Over the course of the school year, there'd just be an open meeting where the teachers can come together. And that power and collaboration has really brought the three schools together and sharing different responsibilities. Our pilot implementation leaders, these were actually people who wanted to take a little bit more responsibility in the, the pilot implementation, and we'll continue to lean on them next year as well. They participated a little bit more professional development, and then were available to be resources for their grade-level teams and their respective buildings. And at the end of, in January, we surveyed all the K to one teachers. We definitely had 80% of educators indicated their interest to adopt wit and wisdom. There are reservations and challenges that come along this, and we'll talk about that. And then 20%, you know, kind of liked what they were doing, and were kind of, they'd be okay not changing, as far as where they're with. And I think that's a pretty strong response, as far as change, because change is hard. So if you have a choice, sometimes people will default to just kind of staying where we are. Over the next two slides, I'm going to welcome Paula Crosby. She's the reading specialist at the Hood School, and she's also K to two, ELA literacy leader. Am I right in this slide?
Hi, everyone. I'm here to speak a little bit about how wit and wisdom can meet our needs as a district. First and foremost, as you think back to the Scarborough's Rope and Simple View of Reading, this is a program that really addresses the oral language or language comprehension component of reading, and it addresses the reading comprehension vocabulary, fluency pillars of the five main. pillars of the five main components of reading instruction. It also dovetails and complements very nicely with both our foundational skills program of Hegarty, Phoebe, McWhairness, and Foundations. In fact, there is another set of texts called GOES that we've been able to procure one district-wide set of, that kind of blends the foundational skills in the same scope and sequence as Foundations, with the content area knowledge that students are building through wit and wisdom, so that kids in small groups can access very engaging texts to both build their knowledge and practice their own decoding and word recognition skills. Another feature of the program is that writing is embedded. It's heavy teacher modeling about how to construct written responses, there's interactive writing with students, and there's opportunities for students to write in response to text. Because the writing is embedded, there's also direct instruction in the components of language, like grammar, sentence structure, and syntax. And lastly, and this is probably one of the most significant elements of the program, it has a major focus on building students' knowledge in a cumulative way, so that most of the texts are taught by Centric and expose students to like historical concepts, science, social studies, and other related key concepts. There's even some art elements that are included for students. So a lot of the science of reading research is showing us that building knowledge is so important. This background knowledge is a huge component of students' comprehension, so it's like a Velcro effect. As we start building students' knowledge K-2, then they then have that foundation to add to as they're reading more complex texts in the upper grades as well. Some additional features of what we can expect from the program are a major focus on like student discussion. So there's a lot of student-driven talk that's based on the texts in the program with teacher modeling and guidance to how to, to elevate their like level of responses. There's also like a lot of focus on creating like an environment of like readers and writers as a community, so it addresses some of the social and emotional learning aspects of what happens in a K-2 classroom. Kids are learning how to respectfully listen and contribute and build up on others' ideas. There's a lot of instructional routines that focus on recognizing the value of everyone's contributions. There's also an emphasis on universal design for learning, so the practices that are embedded in the program provide different opportunities for children to learn and express their knowledge in different ways. And one of the most wonderful things about the program is the authentic text. So it comes with a plethora of like real authentic texts, often which copies of are directly placed in students' hands for them to really engage with and reflect through multiple readings. And lastly, it is a program that is made and designed by Great Minds, which is the same publisher as our reading math curriculum. So for that reason, a lot of the print and online resources and materials are more familiar to teachers, because there's a very similar layout and overall feel to the materials.
As we get through all the strengths that come along whenever you're changing curriculum and you move forward, we, and these would have been some of the ones that were shared by educators that were committed to adopting the curriculum, but also wanted to recognize things that we need to continue to focus on to do better. And there are slides that talk about how we can advance and address some of these things a little bit later. Whenever you do buy something new, there's an implementation cost for the curriculum materials. Like you heard, Mrs. Crosby mentioned the GOES professional development, there is an expense to it. As we become experts in the curriculum ourselves, we'll be able to share that responsibility to provide professional development versus what you need from the vendor, because we've even experienced this year that sometimes you get a really good presenter and have really good sessions, where other times you might have, you might have swung and must go and miss. And, you know, we want to be able to give our teachers what they need in context of North Reading Public Schools. The one, one of the biggest parts of the time-long learning, it is, it is full of text, materials, conversation, discussion, writing, which has really forced us to use the whole 60 minutes of this literacy block, complemented by the 30 minutes of the foundational reading. So that literacy block is 90 minutes in the elementary school classrooms, especially in the K-1. That type of commitment of time has been a stretch at times for our teachers. We've taken that into consideration, even as we planned and what the expectation of how many lessons they were going to get through each week, and where they were going to end each school year for the scope and sequence. As we talked about, the teachers are, you know, when they, whenever they get into a curriculum, there's a stress level, like what is this, or how can we best keep them prepared? And that's something I thought throughout the pilot, that all of the teachers at the K-1 did an excellent job working, and then making sure that we, we think of those organic ways to provide educator support to answer those questions and be available. And I know that people would be available to offer modeling, what it could look like in the classroom, have people go through peer observation. If a teacher wanted somebody to come in to provide feedback in a non-supervisory way, our teachers are willing to do that, our leaders are willing to do that.
My other task.
Yeah, sure.
With the pacing and the 90 minutes, is that different greatly from what timeline is, well, like what it looks like today, or?
It's not. It's not. I think we always say the best literacy block is a 90-minute block. I think our educators had the luxury of being able to flex that a little bit when they needed to, or for different times, depending on the activities that they were doing. This is really pushing to make sure that they're getting that full 60 minutes each time, and you can ask more questions, especially as the next presenter goes to. You're going to get these classroom teachers who are kind of doing it, and they'll be able to talk about what some of that looks like. So the next couple of slides are going to be brought to you by Barbara Mantier. She's a first-grade teacher at the Bachelor School and the ELA leader there for grades K-2 as well.
I think to answer your question, Miss Madoff, my 60-minute literacy block is more intense, and I think the students are getting more out of it, whereas before, not that they weren't learning and taking things from it, I think it's just more content-rich, and they're just more invested.
Right.
So I'm seeing a huge difference. I was one of those 80% that was like, yes, we need wit and wisdom, I'm in love with it, I'm using it in the first-year classroom. So if we look at this slide, it's skillful implementation over fidelity. We had the chance this summer to go to a workshop with Brett Conway, who's the assistant superintendent in Penn Tackett, and this is kind of what he kept preaching, skillful implementation over fidelity. So the manual is designed for 90-minute lessons. We don't have that kind of time, nor do our students have that kind of attention span, right? So how are we going to get all of this into what we need and what they need? So this is where that skillful implementation as a veteran teacher comes in. I'm not sitting there with the manual in my lap, reading line for line, question for question. If I was, I would be bored, my students would be disengaged, and we wouldn't be doing much learning at all. So it does take a lot of time on the teacher part, you know, go home, highlight, post it. I mean, I've never spent so much time in a manual in the last few years than I have this year, but for me, it's worth it. So I'm coming in every day. I know what I need to do, I know what the objective of the lesson is, I'm able to figure out, okay, it says 23 minutes for this part, I can do that in 10. Or my kids seem really engaged, we'll keep going, maybe I'll shorten up something else. There was a lesson a few weeks ago where we had to talk about the color wheel. I know primary colors, right? So I was like, Ms. Stowe, our art teacher, can you help me? Like, so it was super cross-curricular. She was like, yeah, I'll get that in for next week. So she was actually able to take that whole component of what I needed to teach and teach them what they needed. We were studying, studying Hemi Matisse. She was able to take that over. Yeah?
One question, I'll say something else later, but we're talking about the timing here. We still have half-day kindergarten.
So that was going to be my next.
Okay. I was wondering, can you?
So, yeah, so skillful implementation, think our half-day K kids. I was actually talking to our half-day kindergarten teacher this morning, and she is, gosh, a lesson behind the rest of her team. So she is really using skillful implementation, really picking out those parts that they absolutely need, and kind of pushing the rest to the side. But her students are still gaining knowledge and grasping the overall concepts and lessons, and being able to answer the questions that are needed. And then the last bullet is teacher discretion. This last story that I read to my students was called Never Smile at a Monkey, and right on the first line of my manual, it says this book is intense. And I was like, oh, okay, great, going to scare all my children. So I quickly read through it and saw that the 17 animals, out of the 17 animals, 16 of them live in India, Africa, New Zealand, Australia. So I prefaced that with the kids. I said, this book, too, might use some words that are kind of scary, you might be frightened of some of these animals. You're not going to go outside, you know, play on the playground and walk by, you know, a box jellyfish, or an African antelope, things of that nature. So they were a little bit calmer, realizing that those animals weren't in their backyard, which was nice. And then this is kind of just the overall of how it works. So each module is roughly 32 lessons. There are four modules. Again, each module has an overarching essential question. First grade is currently working in Module Two, which is called Creature Features. The essential question is what can we discover about animals' unique features? Within the module, you'll see that the smaller focusing arc, that is for each book that we have, there's a focusing question. So that drives in on just each individual book. For this module, there are five different focusing questions, or five different books that we've been reading to the students. This one is how do animals use their unique features in unsuspecting ways? Each day, so now there's a lesson, and then within that, there is another question, and it repeats itself continuously. So if you can see over on the rainbow side there, day one is always notice and wonder. Day two is always in organized, so what is happening in this text? Day three is the reveal, what is a deeper exploration of, and then it will be Never Smile at a Monkey, reveal in this text. Day four would be the distill, and day five would be the no. That's kind of where we summarize our knowledge, we add it into a class journal. Some of these lessons do, do, do go on for a couple of days. There have been a couple of days where we hang out with the reveal. The kids now, even 116 days in, they know, oh, it's a new book, we're going to notice and wonder today. Or they, they've already found the pattern. So I would be excited for those kids who get into second grade next year, if this program goes up with them, just how much more available they'll be for this deep diving into the text, because they'll already kind of know the pattern. Thank you.
So you've, you've heard a lot about the program and what went through. Some of the things that we, I did share in a document as well with the process, we also, why K-2 and K-5 articulated that a little bit. The, the biggest question really is grade three. That's our swing year in the, in the elementary schools. And there's two things that we're missing, and we have to work together to make a decision on which the best way to go is. Foundations, which is part of our foundational reading, is a K-3 program. We've always used it as a K-2, because the majority of our students have, are proficient and done well with their phonics. But what we're realizing is that they're missing a piece of the systemic instruction that they may need to add in grade three. So we're looking at that as a possible add in the grade-three classroom as a tier-one intervention. And we're going to, we're going to do a little more research with that next year. So the one thing I did not want to do is put two new programs on teachers in one year. So I'd rather address this foundational reading first, because this is how we've built most of our MTSS, is the decoding and what we haven't been able to do with DIBELS, and that kind of gives us the response, too. And then see how the grade-two team does with wit and wisdom, involve the grade-three teachers in some of the professional development, so they can get some of that background knowledge as well, go in and observe all these organic things that we do to, to bring teachers along, and then make a decision sometime soon on that. And then for us, the reason why we bring it in March, it's, it's kind of important in going through there, with school committee approval, which hopefully at the second read on the 25th, I can start to work on procuring materials to get the guides in the teacher's hands as soon as possible. And then once they know this is the direction they're going, we can still offer some of those opportunities to observe where they are. I can, I can look to schedule a professional development day before they leave for the summer, which would be really nice. Last year, we were like asking, and like I said, our educators are absolutely fantastic. They want to be informed, and they want to participate in this. But when we are asking them to do something as a district, I think it's really important that it has to be available to all, and we have a responsibility to present that to all. So we'd use one of those days in June, May or June, then we would create, the same way we did, opportunities for continuous planning over the summer, schedule a professional development day we have before the first day of school, on September 3rd, we'd do a full day there as well. And then in September, right after parent orientation nights, we don't want to overwhelm, but we're thinking like that third, fourth week of September, do a parent informational evening for all the families, that all the teachers in K-2 will present that information as part of their parent information night, but then they can come learn more about the program when it comes time. And then continue to network with the many communities. I included a lot of the list of communities that we've worked with, we've checked with and piloted with. Now, I'm going to say, from the other programs that we looked at, so my view was a great program. That was a comprehensive program that included their foundational reading as part of the program. Our educators felt really connected to Foundations and Hegarty, and did, would prefer not to lose that. So now we were looking for curriculum that wasn't that huge, big box that had everything pitted, and then started to look what could fit around it. And that's one of the other reasons that, why we came to that. And then you could find that list of other curriculum areas they are. And like I said, I put a ballpark out, and that was from the sales rep. Quickly, I just said, can you tell me what this is? It just tested, nothing is logged there. But I can say from working with them that usually we, there's discounts that will be applied. I think that's it. It was a lot, and a little bit of information, in a short period of time. We can take a couple more questions.
I have a couple more, I'm going to just go up here, and I have my microphone. So I'll just say, first, thank you, Mr. Clean, and thank you to the curriculum leaders for all the work you're putting into this. So my question is, you touched on two of them quickly, but I follow to them, one more. First one is more, probably for Mr. Connolly more than anybody, about the cost of acquiring things, is it a fiscal year 24 cost? Yes, okay. So if not in the budget, we're.
In FY23, sorry. I would look to get, procure some of those materials, teacher materials, for my budget. Oh, FY24, sorry.
All right.
I went the wrong way.
Second thing for the parents, you talked about next year in September, having some information for parents. Will there be like, I mean, as a parent of younger kids, all I ever heard was just read to your kids and have them read to you. But are there specific prompts or things like that, that parents should be doing that's different, or is it the same sort of just read to your kids and have them read?
Because of the science of reading, is that?
Yeah, because, I mean, the change, are there changes, are there different prompts we should be, when you're reading to your kids, to be giving to them?
Yes and no. One is still just read to your kids. We know that oral language is a huge component of the science of reading, so we want children to keep, even just talking, like talking to your kids, narrating, if you're at the grocery store, just having conversations with students, because I do think that that's also diminishing with the use of technology, and the conversations aren't there. And then reading those higher-level texts, you know, that your child might not be able to read, especially at a younger age, for the vocabulary, for the background knowledge. I also think, if I'm wrong, ladies, you know, a lot of times when parents are reading at home to their child, they might be like, oh, look at the picture, oh, what, the word starts with an M, what could it be? And that's all that guessing stuff that was embedded in balanced literacy that we've really shifted away from. I know in my classroom during parent night, I kind of give my parents a quick overview of, if your child is stuck on a word, here's what I want you to do instead of this. So I think that would be information that we would also make sure that we communicate with parents.
And the program itself also does have like parent letters with each module that is a form of communication to let them know the topic, the content, and things that they could kind of involve in conversation at all, or other books, other books that are related.
I was going to ask, so, so that's been happening even during the pilot, then the parents have been getting that, so? Because I was going to ask, have parents, how aware are the, are the parents whose children are participating, and have you gotten any feedback from them about?
The parents are aware, we informed them as well, and we did some surveying through educators, because at the K-1, they're, they're not seeing as much of the materials. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, too, I think one of the things to answer both questions is that you hear students a lot more curious, because they're learning more about specific topics, and then they're translating that to real life, like, I wonder, I notice and wonder, and how to ask those questions to start having dialogue. So I think that that has been one. And then I, the other thing that I have heard from parents through a little bit of informal check-ins is... through a little bit of informal check-ins is when you ask them what they did at school, they're telling you more. You know that, no, like because they're spending more time with content and getting their questions answered in that level. So they're able to tell you more about what they're learning in school. That's, I think that's one of the big shifts too from the, the balanced literacy. It's actually, it's all shifting so quickly because of a short controlled text. This is, this is not short controlled text.
And then for one comment and then my last question. My, my only comment is just, I say all the time, I'm not an educator and we're not educators. And so I think overall, our job is to ask some basic questions, but realistically, I would just defer to the judgment of the curriculum leaders and Mr. Clean and Dr. Daley. And so I will, obviously I'll support whatever you guys are suggesting here. The one question that I had was more from a meeting this morning that Dr. Daley was running, talking about the Student Opportunity Act, and specifically looking at how in, across the state, but in this district in particular, there are some gaps for, you know, students with disabilities, low-income students. Um, and so I'm just curious if the new curriculum tries to address those gaps, you know, in, in any way.
Does very much, very much, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what, and correct me, you jumped in anywhere there too. I think this is, actually, I think this is one of the strengths. I think we get, we get, I think the way we struggle with foundational reading sometimes, we talk about early reading difficulties and being able to diagnose them and give the right support. Because the students aren't being successful with decoding reading, they're not getting that complex text, even if it is through classroom discussion and seeing and making more connections. So we're really banking on that, that oral language and that complex text to try to minimize that gap from as early on as K one, which I, which I hope does transfer to MCAS eventually. You know, we do very well in this, you know, we're looking at, but we still look at about seven out of ten are proficient or meeting expectations in Grade Three. I'd love to see that become eight out of ten, nine out of ten, ten out of ten. Um, and, and I'm hoping that this will move the needle. That will take time to see and realize that that's kind of one of those investment points that we're looking.
And I would add into UDL aspects of it as well.
And I think too, a lot of this text, like Paula was saying, covers so many broad topics, like history, science. Um, I mean, we traveled around the world in our first module. We were in South America, we were over in Europe, we were in Asia, we were down in Africa. They learned about Alexandria, Egypt, and the library cat, how they needed cats to, to protect the books or the scrolls. I mean, things that I was never teaching first graders. I'm reading some of this, going, oh, I learned something new today too, right? Um, so I think we're bringing all of this worldly experience to children who might not be able to get it outside of school.
That's great. Just piggybacking on what Scott said, I do feel like we're, we're not the experts. We are here to give the experts the tools they need. And I, I do like what you said about, you know, there's maybe a big box approach, but that's not what we're doing here. Cherry picking what works best for your classrooms, you know, sticking with the foundations going with us. And I appreciate that because it obviously means you're taking the tools that you need for your toolbox and build customizing it. So I appreciate that.
This is me to your slide on skillful implementation was so critical. Um, one of the things that you learn is once you start to take one thing out, you learn three lessons later, they might refer back to it. So like, that's one of those first-year bumps and bruises as far as creating that scope and sequence of what we are expecting, like those non-negotiables of all students to try to experience through that curriculum. And then that will help trim it down and kind of make the add-ons and what's extra and stuff like that. And we're really good at that, our teacher leaders and communicating with our grade-level teams. That is a strength, it always has been.
My, my only concern is nothing to do with the curriculum. It's the, they have to take kindergarten, which is my only concern. But that, that's neither here nor there depending on the district number or the other curriculum, but, um, it is something that we're trying to address. But, Daley?
Just want to say thank you again. To me, the, the teacher leadership model here in our district is really the secret sauce. I think of our success. And honestly, the, the hours that they put in, in a regular year, but, and, and Mr. Clean, having gone through this, you know, with math and with others in the past, the amount of time that they put in to, you know, just think about all these new books coming in, passing them out, grouping them, getting to people, that they're, um, making sure that this goes well through a pilot and now getting to the stage of implementation. And, um, I think for, for these three, it's been a passion as well. I mean, they're sending me links to podcasts to listen to about science of reading. I mean, this has been multiple years of getting to this point. And so I just want to thank them for all of those many hours and, and their time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, do you want to, do you want to vote on the first reading and then vote the second reading later on? Do you want to make a motion for me?
And they don't all need to come back, both of us.
No, I don't.
We have a plan going here.
You want to keep going? I will move that the committee vote to approve the first reading of adopting the, uh, the Curriculum Adoption Proposal of K through twelve, Early Literacy, uh, of the Wit and Wisdom Program.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor?
I oppose.
Yes, it's three zero. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
For tonight and for all the time.
Okay. Moving right along.
So we're going to pull that presentation. I do have actually copies for the audience.
I know, I get a stiff neck.
Yeah. Well, this is a great spot though.
I know, you hope that, I know it's my spot for a short time.
I'll say I have my own microphone.
I know.
Everybody else always brings all the computers. I look at it the night before. I just print it out. He has something over my shoulder.
All right, so I'm going to, um, walk through the FY twenty-five fiscal year preliminary, um, school budget. Um, so this is really the kickoff of the school budget process. We've been, the administration's been, obviously for several months, hard at work and working through several iterations of developing a fiscal year budget for next year. Uh, we've definitely heard a lot of feedback at this point from administrative's team, from staff, and Dr. Daley, and central office administrative, and our administrative council and principals, budget leaders, um, have put together a proposed recommended budget. This is really the process of us kind of passing that port over to the school committee and trying to, um, move through the process of getting a fiscal year twenty-two-five budget adopted. So these are the agenda topics I'm going to touch upon. I'll try to move through relatively quickly. Um, but we're just kind of going to start at the macro level and just talk the picture of the revenue sources that fund school and municipal budgets. We'll talk about the challenges from a macro level that all North Reading is facing, as well as I think just structurally is, uh, the challenges that all school, schools go through when building a budget. We'll particularly get into the major budget drivers of this budget, and then we'll get into the numbers a little bit. And I think you'll, there, the hope is that you'll see where the priorities are of the administration and get funds to be spent. We're going to talk enrollment, we're going to talk staffing, new positions, strategic, driven by strategic plan, driven by enrollment, um, positions that are coming off grants that we want to still prioritize and so forth. So we'll talk about those. Then we'll talk about budget offsets and subsidies and so forth, and then I'll get into some conclusions. So from a big-picture level, revenue sources of a, of a school and municipal budget, but obviously in a community like North Reading, local property taxes that have a fund being a major revenue source, that we are just a piece of pie. That this, these percentages have changed very, very little in, um, over a decade.
One quick question, Mr. Connolly, just to be clear. On, you give us the three of our columns. All the numbers you're looking at are the middle column, the modified level services, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, correct. So, um, we are presenting sort of a modified level services budget, is what you're referring to. So we're taking, we're trying to present, um, level services, meaning adjustments for enrollment and other changes. So we're delivering the same level of services that we're delivering currently. And then as we typically do in, in the administration in North Reading is we're presenting above a level services based on priorities that are driven by our strategic plan that is known as NRPS twenty-two-five. So next year represents the final year of that plan. We're a little bit behind, and we're not going to fully fund everything that was put together in that plan over the last five years. But it's certainly all new initiatives that are driven by that strategic plan.
Just sort of like Mr. Keller, who's there talking from the finance money, you're talking about, this isn't, this isn't the one point two deficit. This is the one point nine.
Correct. So these are the revenue sources. I think this is just, again, big picture. We have state aid, chapter seventy, government, our restricted local aid. We have local receipts that come into the community, you know, exercise, more to be go, excise tax, mail's tax, permits, fees, licensing fees. And then on the school department side, we have additional levels of revenue, which I'll get to at the end, that help offset and help fund the big picture of the budget. We have, we have federal grants that we rely on annually. We have state grants, state revenue that we rely on. And then we have programs that we assess a fee or tuition for. Full-day kindergarten, preschool, athletics, performing arts, and busing. So all that goes into the pie that helps fund the school budget. So that's, that's really the revenue sources. Big-picture level, again, is always challenges. Um, and I think when we look at funding any type of municipal, city, town, school budget, there's this structural deficit that exists. Um, and this has been the case for many, many years. And what I mean by that is just, the reality of it is that our fixed costs, that grow that we have to fund each year, health insurance, benefits, retirement costs, life insurance, workers, all, all the costs that we need to fund to support the community, the reality is that those grow greater revenues. And in some cases, by this chart, they grow almost twice the level, the pace, for a percentage increase basis than our annual revenue coming in. So that creates this kind of structural deficit that exists. And this has been the case for many years, that we, um, all communities in like North Reading particularly have had to deal with for a number of years, and that is certainly the case for this year. Um, because obviously with Proposition Two and a half, there's, there's a cap of what we can certainly raise through, through property taxes. And the other revenue sources that I just referenced are limited in terms of what that growth can be on an annual basis. The other challenge that the school department has is in addition to the revenue sources being challenged or limited, is we actually have diminishing school revenue offsets for next year. And that's because, I'm going to get into that more in detail, but we had, for many years, going back to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, three or four years now, we've had the ability to pull from, I guess, COVID nineteen grants for a period of time, and even diminishing. And this current fiscal year that we're in, twenty-twenty-four, is really the last year that we're able to use those funds that are available. So you're going to see in a moment what that impact is. It's about two-hundred-and-thirteen, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in four positions that have been funded for a number of years through those COVID nineteen emergency relief grants, known as ESR. But those are expiring at the end of this fiscal year. And those are positions that the school department has relied on for many, many years, and we want to still prioritize those in this budget. So that, that's a challenge. Contractual obligations, so we have, most of that being our salary obligations with employees and employee unions in any school department budget. Salaries and personnel costs are going to make up over eighty percent, and this year it's more eighty-three percent. So we, that's going to be a big pot, um, part of the picture, the pie, the driver, and we need to fund those obligations. We have other fixed cost increases. Inflation's been growing. There's been supply shortages, there's been increase in shipping costs, increase in inflation. So some of the expenses that, for materials and supplies and shipping, that paper is, for example, that used to grow kind of at this level is now kind of jumped through some of these shortages that have existed. So we've had to adjust, um, the budget for those, for those materials, those supplies, software increases. Busing is also one of those. So obviously, a regular busing contract happens to be going up at a much larger rate next year than we experienced previously. So we have to adjust the budget for, for those types of things. Those are out of our control, they're fixed costs. Special education, again, always, um, a driver. And, and this is just, what I mean by the word challenge is just this level of uncertainty with special education, just because we don't know, or can't, it's, it's difficult to predict. And we certainly will prioritize and, and check and fund both in and out of district costs. But those can change very quickly, and, and there's a level of uncertainty in that, in that expense category. So again, I mean, some of this is repetition, but the drivers, contractual salary obligations, because any school budget's going to have, represent eighty-three percent of that piece of the expense budget. The appropriation is going to be salaries. Uh, and we need to certainly fund, and we have a desire to fund appropriate, salaries for our staffs to retain, you know, high-quality staff, which we've been able to do here in North Reading. So that's going to be a, a, a big driver. And you see in a moment, we get to the numbers, um, this illustrated. So we certainly have contractual obligations, cost of living adjustments, step adjustments for those districts on, maybe on salary scale or step, um, that are due increases. We certainly have an obligation to fund those, and that is always a big piece of the pie. We also have our operational fixed costs, some of those which I just mentioned. We want to maintain our four campuses really well. We have HVAC contracts, boiler contracts, heating utility contracts. Um, none of those, um, increases remain level funded. They, they go up each year. So nothing gets, we've experienced increases to those contractual increases for building maintenance areas, also busing, and also utilities. Um, so the budget has to be updated to reflect those, and that's going to be a driver. The NRPS twenty-two-five, what I mean there is that's our strategic plan. So I spoke of that earlier, and that's driving the increases, the enhancements above and beyond level services. And that's been the case, and that's the process we've used here in North Reading for many, many years. That served, served the district well. And you'll see in a moment what are some of those priorities and those mainly positions driven by our strategic plan. But it's certainly a, a drasher. And then special education costs. So we certainly have funds that are needed to support anticipated out-of-district tuitions and transportation costs. Those are going up next year, um, like they are in many, many districts across the Commonwealth. We do anticipate an increase in the number of students that are being educated outside the district. And we expect, um, due to move-ins and so forth that happens right this time. And this can change, this is that kind of volatility I spoke of earlier. At least three more students being educated next year outside the district. So we have to adjust the budget in the out-of-district lines for tuitions and transportations accordingly. We also experience rate increases for private date placements and collateral placements that go up. So those rates don't stay the same each year. Those rates that we get assessed for those tuition costs rise. So we're experiencing an increase there. So we've had to make those adjustments, and it's still certainly, um, something that we continue to look at and, and reallocate sources to continue to have the appropriate programs in-house to educate students. But when appropriate, we have to allocate the resources to educate a child outside the district. So those are the major drivers. If we get into the numbers now, um, you can, I think you can see some of these budget drivers reflected, um, but salaries. So this compares fiscal, on these five expense categories which we've looked at, this chart compares fiscal twenty-five, next year, proposed budget to current year and what those changes are. And.
Mr. Connolly, one quick question. On the FY twenty-four budget, more of a clarification. Last year, we had about five-hundred thousand one-time funds. That's included within the thirty-seven, three-one-nine, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little less than five-hundred thousand. Because it was five-hundred thousand we spent over two years.
Okay.
So it's about half, it's a little, little plus.
I thought we got four-hundred or something, four-hundred something.
We had four-hundred, I believe you were throwing to the ESR?
No, 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 I'm talking about at the end. When we're looking at how we do the project from five to twenty.
Big picture revenue plan. Big picture revenue plan, yeah.
Because we really got like $36,800,000 or something, and then we.
That is correct.
We funded about $500,000 of one-time expenses.
Yes, the $37,319,595 is the amount that was eventually appropriated at last year's town meeting that has funded the school budget. But within that amount, there was some identified number that was included as one-time cost that got us to that number. So that is included.
Correct.
Okay, good question. So you can see salaries certainly going up within that increase, which is the largest increase, that's going to be the case, is certainly our contractual salary obligations with our existing staff to meet known cost of living adjustments for employees and employee unions. We are in the midst of negotiating a new contract with the teachers, the NRTA. So there's certainly an amount included for that anticipated outcome. And then, as well as in that line, you'll see in a moment, is increases for new staffing positions driven by enrollment, particularly at the elementary level. So that's where we're seeing the largest increase next year is at the elementary level. High school slight increase, middle school slight decrease. But particularly the need for the increase in staffing is we're seeing an increase at the primary grades at the elementary level, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Mostly kindergarten, first grade, actually. And that's where we really want to protect our class size guidelines. So there's an increase in staffing there. The other part of that increase is the NRPS 2025 positions driven by our strategic plan, which we'll get off the end in a moment. And as well as the need to shift positions that were once funded outside of this appropriation, because we had a grant, a federal grant through COVID-19, SR grant, that is now rolling in there. And we feel we want, those positions are still very much a priority, so we've had to shift that. So that's that diminishing revenue that I spoke of earlier.
Just to clarify that again, then, so there's three different types of positions within that.
Correct.
The SR funds that were, the positions that were being funded by SR are in there now.
Correct.
There's some that just due to enrollment, we need another kindergarten teacher, those are in there. And then we do have that middle column.
Correct.
You know, a few positions that we would like there.
Right.
And the, and the salary pool that is a higher increase in typical because of what we're holding for.
Correct.
The expectation of the negotiation.
That's true, yeah. And I think the three staff, out of three charts later in the presentation, they talk about three pools of staffing. Instructional expenses, certainly, I think that's certainly inflationary increases, supplies, materials, software, that's from the classroom. Some of this is technology, software, some of this is materials in the classroom need to be adjusted. The operations and maintenance piece, that's the utilities, that's some of our maintenance contracts for HVAC, maintenance and so forth that need to increase. The transportation, this is both special ed, transportation and regular ed. The majority of the increase there is a little bit twofold. Some of that is the regular education rate increase. The rate we are being charged per bus per day is going up from $380 a bus per day to $410. So that's like an 8% increase that we've had to adjust that amount for. And with more students being educated outside the district, as well as that contract also changed for next year, and we actually do that through our consortium with Cine Collaborative, we've had to adjust that because of rates. So that's what's driving that increase, but it's certainly a cost driver this year.
Is the transportation number the gross, the amount of the actual charge at or after the offset?
It's after, that's not, that's a gross, that's, I'm sorry, that's a net number, I'm sorry.
That's after the fees are taken into account, that's in the budget. And are you assuming for that number, are you assuming no increase in the?
No increase in the fee.
In the fee right now?
Right, yep. Tuitions, so that's what I spoke of, those are increasing. That's partly new students we're anticipating that are going to be educated outside the district next year. And that's also part of this rate increases, that known rate increases for collaboratives that we have memberships with, that we have to adjust for, as well as increases for private day programs, both day programs and residential that we know are going to increase. So all in all, we're looking at more than $3.3 million increase as a proposed budget right now over fiscal year '24. We know that's sizable. This is, in this 9% recommended budget increase is the highest we've had that we've been standing here at this stage recommending. So, and I think in a big portion of that is a level, we would consider level services. So I'm going to get into a little bit in a moment, but you know, why, there's reasons why a level services budget is that much higher than it has been in the past. And I think a lot of that is the drivers I just spoke of. Certainly the need to meet some contractual salary obligations that are a little bit higher than it has been in the past. The need to have, meet enrollment increases, add staffing due to enrollment, which we haven't had to do for a couple of years. And then some of these other transportation fixed cost increases and special ed has really driven that number up higher than we typically see. So just really quick, I kind of talked all about some of this in detail already, but just where we're seeing the funds being spent, just two pie charts that break down the fiscal year '25 budget, certainly instructional services. These are services that directly impact the classroom, both from classroom teachers, from instruction, normal materials, from classroom supplies, from technology, that should always be the largest piece of the pie. And certainly that's the case here, representing over 77%. Then we have areas, next largest piece is just the operations and maintenance piece, which is to maintain our campuses, custodial services, cleaning services, maintenance, building maintenance services. Utilities are represented there. And then we have the tuitions out of the out of district tuitions, that's the next largest piece of the pie. Student services certainly represented here as well. That's nursing services are a part of that. Student activity expenses and so forth are part of that piece of pie. And then, and then we have our district administration, which is at 2.9%, which is actually, I do reference, that is about a percent lower than the state average, which is closer to 4%. So we are working hard to kind of manage our operational costs, manage our administrative costs, because we ideally want to reallocate and have as much resources devoted to instructional services in a school budget or student services. Way to look at it, just another way to look at it, so now obviously salaries and compensation, 82.9%, largest piece of the pie, obviously. And then we have our tuition costs, we have our transportation costs, we have some contractual services. So to me, what this represents is we're looking at a $40 million plus budget, which is a really high number. And sometimes it's, I think it's easy to say, you know, why can't you just kind of shift money around and find money for this position or that position? I think the reality of it is, is so much of our, this budget is fixed, that things that we have to meet obligations for, both from personnel, as well as from our expenses for contracts, for utilities, for services that we need, that we have contractual relationships with, that even though we're asking for a $40 million budget, and the reality is, I think, less than 3% of that is really what I would refer to as discretionary. So if we're going to start making changes, we start to have to make tough budgetary decisions, which this year that's possible. We're really not working with, so much of that is fixed, it's really a much smaller number that we have to work with. And that's the challenge of the school budget. So getting into the positions, so here's the enrollment driven positions. 2.4 FTE reflected, as you can see, it's almost all elementary school positions, because that's where we're seeing the increase. I shouldn't put a moment chart up here, I don't know what we're seeing. 60-plus students is the projected increase at the elementary level next year. And they're essentially all dedicated at the primary grades. And we really want to have, meet class guidelines, our class guidelines of 18 to 22 students, which this would achieve, continue to allow us to achieve. So we're seeing grade one, we're seeing a kindergarten increase. There's a need to adjust the specialist positions to maintain class size, maintain sessions, maintain access to these specialty programs across all three schools. And then there's a need based on special education cohort of students at the hood school to increase a special education staff at the hood school. That is to really deliver the same level of services that they have seen today in the same similar class size guidelines within 18 to 22 students per class. The same access to services, support services, special education services, music, art, health. These adjustments should not impact those class sizes or impact direct access to these programs. So that's why we do consider this increase a level services increase. So what's not level services, what's sort of enhancement above and beyond? And that would be reflected here. And again, these 5.6 FTE positions, again, are driven by our strategic plan, known as NRPS 2025. And these, this wouldn't fully fund NRPS 25, there are other positions, but these would be the high priority positions that the administration's prepared here today to recommend to the school committee for consideration. And I'll touch upon these briefly, but certainly school adjustment counselor, as the importance of this position is immense, and we've certainly seen that. The COVID-19 pandemic and coming out of that a few years ago has certainly heightened the need for mental health support at all levels. And it's been a goal of our strategic plan to have a designated school adjustment counselor at every level. Certainly, high school, middle school has that, the elementary schools do not. So this 0.6 increase would allow that to be the case. And we think that's really important, especially in this climate. And this would allow us to achieve that. The next two increases, math and literacy coach would certainly, I think if you look at where North Reading needs to grow in comparison to maybe what some other districts in the area have been able to have, it's really in this area of sort of academic supports in literacy and math in particular, to provide that support and that coaching to our instructional staff. And this would be the first step in us achieving that. So they're positions that are going to support teachers, administrators, designing and delivering instruction. They're going to help teachers design and facilitate, you know, professional learning across school and district-based professional development goals. And they're also going to provide our educators coaching and consultation for our educators to model effective instructional teaching and strategies. So important positions, I know Mr. Kellner, he'll probably ask some more detailed questions later. But certainly a position we have not been able to fund, and they're very important positions. Yes.
Just to say, just, we get the question sometimes, what a coach does. And so based on what we just saw, right, so a coach being able to get into classrooms, help a teacher that's implementing a new program is a huge asset. And those academic interventionists, depending on the models that are currently in place in the schools, that could look like support for reading specialists as well, which we need at all of our schools to further the goals we just talked about.
And are these ranked?
Yeah, these are administratively ranked.
So if we got one of them, the top one would be the one that we want them, we need the most, you think?
Correct.
It's a question.
I have a question. Are these amounts inclusive of what the hopefully settled contract will be with the teachers? The new contract that's being negotiated, or are these based on what is currently in place?
It's a good question. These are based on what's currently in place.
So we can expect this to be higher than the final?
We've included a salary that's within, it's embedded within the salary. That's a good, that's a good question.
And it's an average salary, right?
It's an average, it represents an average salary, correct.
The actual dependent experience.
Correct, yeah.
We have a target number that we.
But it's based on the current salary schedule. So that's a good question. As Dr. Daly mentioned, so similarly, the academic interventionists, we would love to be requesting more of these positions to provide that support as an early intervention model. We've been able to, some of these schools have, I think we, one elementary school has one of these positions, and it's been instrumental. We also have, right now, we have tutors working at our elementary schools, and we want to enhance that and add professional positions. We would love to be requesting four of these positions, as that's what's really reflected in our strategic plan. But again, we're kind of struck a balance. And this would allow us to move these initiatives forward, upgrade over our current tutoring model. And this would provide sort of a half a position at each elementary school in some type of model, and then a half a position at the middle school, professional position.
Could I mention to you, this does not reflect the possibility of losing our Title I tutors. So we actually scaled back some of our requests here, knowing that those positions are there. It's about $70,000 that we may not get for federal grants next year, right? That's not included.
Yeah, that's correct. This does include sort of enhancement, we wouldn't be removing the current tutors. So we would want to keep those in place, and this is sort of enhancement and a supplement above what they're, the work that they're currently doing at each elementary school. The last position here is again, the administrative position. This is in line with the STEM coordinator that we were at, we were able to add up to one new position we were able to add through the fiscal year 2024 budget. We've seen how much the districts moved forward with that position, how important that role has been. The next phase of that model of redefining our curriculum leadership, enhancing our curriculum leadership model was the humanities coordinator. So that's certainly an important position to continue that initiative. So here's the new positions, $476,889. So in a moment, I'll kind of show a slide that summarizes sort of salary increases of these positions, meaning in terms of the increase that's added to the budget. This is the SR-funded positions I spoke of earlier. And I've shown this slide now for a few years, because we had, this started back in '21. We had SR1 in '21, we had SR2 in fiscal year '22. And then we got SR3, which we had two years to spend, and we chose not to spend it all in fiscal year '23. We chose to spend half in '23 and half in '24. But now that the funding clip in a sense has come, and we're looking at this $213,000 not being there next year. And we tried to make that as minimal of an impact as we could. We could have spent all 425, 450 that we had in one year, and then we'd be looking at a cliff that lost that revenue much earlier.
Yes, and just to be clear, the 213 is not fully funded, those four positions?
That's correct, that's a partial offset.
So if you cut these four positions, it would actually be saving more than 213?
Correct, correct. So that's why, this is that's a grant amount, not salary amount.
Do you know what the total number is for those four?
Yeah, it's, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can, it's.
I don't remember if you did like half of, half of the shanglin, like.
It would be that 67 placeholder for the three and the four.
Seventy, yeah.
The 50s. So I'd say it'd be another 20.
Yeah, I have it.
But yeah.
Correct. It's fun, it's very close.
It's a good question. So in summary, we'll get to offsets in a moment and talk a bit more about revenue offsets. But this is what we're asking for, so the general fund, this is what we're asking for the community to support at town meeting at the moment, this is step N, step one, is a local appropriation of $40,679,524 budget. That is again, $3,359,929 more, or 9% greater than fiscal '24. So that is a much higher number than we had asked for in the past, we recognize that. We're usually at this stage, 5.5%. And there's reasons for that that kind of lead into this evening. Then we have our grants and other ballistics, we'll get to a little bit more of what is behind these numbers in a moment. But we do annually count on these, this revenue for our federal state grants. Most of these are title of grants. And as Patrick moved to, it says we could potentially lose a Title I grant, which would have an impact.
And that's not a 3.8?
That's not, correct.
Maybe 400, basically 400% with that, that we'd be losing.
Mm-hmm. So the reason why this is. So the, the reason why this is, the main reason why this, this, what this loss of revenue is, is the SR funds going down. And I think we're also assuming it would be a loss in some of our revolving revenue around kindergarten and so forth. Because we, we are proposing, and this budget does propose, that's the other thing above level services in this budget proposes. That we would like to move to free, universal, our free day, free full day kindergarten. So there's a loss of revenue for that as well. So in reality, even though we'd be asking the community to support, budget a little bit greater than forty point six million dollars. The total budget, we're looking at what our offsets are for our state and federal grants that we rely on annually. And our assessed fees for programs is a budget that's forty, a little bit greater than forty-three point eight million. And that still doesn't tell the whole story because we have griffs in grants that we receive annually from the, we have the PTO and PTAs that have, that fund enrichment programs and have local budgets about ten to twelve thousand dollars, maybe fifteen thousand dollars a school, not greater than, greater than that, the elementary schools. That help support sometimes classroom supplies, certainly enrichment programs, class field trips that are part of the curriculum. You know, embedded, they're helping support that, those expenses of about, on the annual average of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we also receive gifts and donations for a wide range of helping help funds for arts activities, athletic activities, student activities, technology, equipment. That, annual average is about two hundred and fifty thousand of that, of that amount. So this is, I tried to be as transparent as I could. This is, I'm just trying to show, here's the final adopted budget from this current fiscal year. And again, as Mr. Buckle alluded to, that it was the budget that was essentially approved at town meeting. But it did include some assumptions that there would be some one-time costs in there that drove that up for the school department. But how are we kind of, in summary, if you just look at what the major drivers, the major changes that are getting us to the three billion, three point three million dollar increase or a nine percent increase for the request that's on the table today? Which again, we're saying is modified level services. And we have our contractual obligations, which does include the salary pool. So that is four point six three percent to fund that contractual obligations. We have those enroller driven positions I just spoke of, that's, that impact is point five percent to the, to the budget increase. We have the new requested position, which is one, which is adding one point three percent. Then we have a loss of revenue. So the combination of the loss of that two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars SR funds, the reduction of the kindergarten offset, because we want to eliminate the fee. And then circuit breakers actually going up, that's the special education reimbursement account. So the net impact is about three thirty-seven or so. And that's at, because the majority of that's losing. That's why we're adding a point nine percent. That's diminishing revenue offsets that I spoke of earlier, impact. We have our fixed contractual increases on the expense side of the equation, busing utilities and materials. Adding about a point three seven percent increase. And then the last two lineups here can be related to the special education cost center. Which is transportation and contractual services to deliver in district services, to meet students' needs to, and then to meet transportation out of district increases is zero point three and one point one percent. So that's how we're really getting to the nine percent. So this is really all the changes that reflected here. And I think in terms of what's above and beyond level services, I should have wrote that out a little bit better way of showing. Would really be the new requested positions with one point three percent. And then I think embedded in the desire to have free full day kindergarten. So embedded in that three thirty-seven number is that impact. So I think we're really sort of one point five, one point six percent above level services budget. I'll try to go quickly to the school funding sources. We've talked about this, these are what funds a school budget. We have the general fund where we're asking the community to support, and then we have these special revenue accounts. This is a slide that we've been showing for a few years. And I think it attempts to show you, these are five major, or six major programs that we assess a fee to. So this is the revolving side of the equation. We assess a fee for bus, regular bus transportation. And that amount, unfortunately, bussing doesn't get cheaper. At least it has not for a number of years. So with everything going on in that market, with the cost of fuel, the shortage of drivers, the cost of equipment, the shortage of buses. That just needs, that just keeps increasing. So, and we haven't, I know last year we did increase the user fee, but we haven't had huge increases. But the increase of the user fee certainly, I think it's been one increase or two increases in the last ten years. Has not kept pace of the expense increases. So when I first started presenting this slide, seven, eight years ago, six, whatever it was, we were at fifty percent. And now we're at thirty percent. So the cost, the income that we're taking in from the user fee is supporting about thirty percent of the actual cost of that program. See, it's a similar, it's a similar scenario at play almost across the board athletics. I think we're definitely close to fifty percent. But again, things don't get cheaper to, to rent, to rent the, you know, ice rental, insurance costs, materials, supplies, equipment. To rent the, the, you know, pool rental, all these different things that we have that makes up the athletic budget. Costs for uniforms, equipment. Those grow and we haven't increased the user fee for athletics in quite some time. So that amount has, has, has dropped. Extracurricular and, and performing arts, where, where we've actually introduced some new fees here recently, last couple of years. And that, those are closer to fifty percent being funded at. And then the kindergarten program, we've been reducing that user fee over a number of years. Not at the pace we would like ideally, but we're down to twenty-five hundred as a full day fee currently. The, this proposal was looking to go to free. And the user fee contribution has reduced down to almost twenty-two percent of the cost. So the idea there is we, we do expect to have a reserve of, of funds in that account when we close out this fiscal year. So if we were to go free, we would try to use that over a couple of years. That's why it doesn't go directly to zero. So if we didn't have that reserve, that would be zero.
So there's no, there's no new money in that two fifty?
Correct. That's, we're going to try to spend a reserve.
And a short chunk, it's, it's, it's diminishing.
It's still going to diminish. So we're trying, instead of having, we're trying to avoid having a five hundred thousand dollar impact.
Similar to the, we did EDS or funds, it's, it's for a couple of years and then it goes to zero.
Right. And then the preschool. Yes.
Question about the kindergarten fees. As far as Melrose, it's in a pretty gradual decrease, like five hundred dollars a year, a little bit less.
Yeah.
Why are you jumping from twenty-five hundred for full day down to free?
Yeah, so we, we are, we are, ideally, we, we want to achieve free, universal, full day kindergarten. And that's been part of our strategic plan for a number of years. So what, I think we had a plan that said free back fiscal year twenty twenty-five, that was kind of what we called it. So we've fallen, we would have liked to have done seven fifty a year or a thousand a year. And we've had to taper that aggressiveness of that decrease. So in an ideal situation, we would, we would really want to be free next year.
And to be clear, there's also years that we've put this war on there. But as we're trying to balance a budget, we've compromised and not gone all the way.
At this stage, last year, we were recommending free as well, right?
So we, we try to get that.
But that means, given the budget realities. I think, I think the only thing I would say is it's gone down every year for the last.
Three years.
Three years, even in tough budget times.
We'll talk, we'll talk about, once we get to, we'll start, we'll have a discussion, the three of us, and then we'll open up to everybody. And kind of go, but yeah, this is showing.
We're behind just one year.
Yeah, that's a lot, that's.
Yeah, a few more slides. So I've already talked about this, but this just shows you the, the history of our revolving grants and the, and the drop that we're seeing next year because of mainly SR and the full day kindergarten. A little bit of history of what has been funded with our general fund request. So you can see where we've been, we've kind of been averaging about three and a half percent. More, more recently though, about four, a little over four percent. And we've essentially been funding a level services budget with some modest increases, which we've called modified level services over the last few years. And you can see the, you know, the increase, the proposed increase for next year is obviously much greater. Which presents some challenges clearly. Really quickly, I will go through all these because these haven't changed too much. We, we work really, really hard to avoid costs as much as possible. And I just want that to be clear. We, we try to purchase from state bid list to make our school expense budgets, making sure they're reflecting the most, you know, discounted pricing for materials and supplies into the classroom mainly and technology. We try to modulate and regulate schedules for lighting, electricity in, across all schools. We work with a consortium to try to lock in gas rates at a advantageous time and control, control our utility costs. Obviously, being a district that's a kind of municipal district with arm and mouth to eat, we're already receiving great cheap electricity costs as it is. Special education, we, we really work hard to commit to keep students with appropriate certainly in our schools through customized programming. We have memberships to two collaboratives, team collaborative, we have a shared transportation model. That means when we have students being transported to the same private day school placements or collaborative placements or other area communities, we share that cost. Because it might be a student from Melrose Wakeville, stolen him on the same van. And if that's the case, that's shared between those communities. So that's a, it's a model that does save us, save us money and avoid costs. A food service program has performed really, really well. Part of that's because the state continues to support free, universal free breakfast and lunch. Athletic costs, the funding of those two multi-function school activity vehicles has helped reduce the transportation costs considerably over the last several years. And then maintenance and operations, I think we just, we really work hard to, to control our cost. Certainly, the tool cat, and John Keller is here through the capital improvement planning committee. He chairs that committee, there was support of that piece of equipment a few years ago. And we've seen advancement or real savings. So we, we definitely work hard to just have constant vigilance with respect to our daily operations. So that's some cost avoidance. So in conclusion, where are we at? What has this budget accomplished? It meets our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It helps us meet those fixed cost increases for busing, utilities and maintenance areas. We maintain, maintains our ad staff to maintain educationally sound student teacher ratios, particularly at the elementary level. Like grade kindergarten, grade one. Enhances the academic support systems to address areas of learning loss. And to really be proactive with our learning intervention strategy. That certainly coaches and academic interventionists would do, would achieve that. The social, emotional, mental health needs, that's the adjustment counselor request. Curriculum leadership model, to really support educators across curriculum instruction assessment. That's moving forward with the K through twelve, kindergarten coordinator. We certainly have funding in here to continue our technology program, our digital learning model and the one-to-one program. That's all included. And then the cost to properly maintain our facilities. So next steps, again, we look at this as phase one. Step one, I'm sorry, of this process, we're going to be having the ongoing discussions over the next six to seven weeks. Certainly the finance planning team, which is mainly the chairs and vice chairs of all major boards. We know we have a, a tall task ahead of us this year. We have challenges and we have a large conservative gap that does exist. Both certainly from level services budget as well as what we're requesting this evening. Other opportunities to be involved, budget webinar on March twenty-eighth, school made budget workshops. We will, we'll, we'll conduct to talk about these challenges more in detail. Public hearing on this budget on April eighth at seven PM in this room. Additional budget workshops by the school committee, school committees do go somewhere between April twenty-second and May first. Scheduled currently on April twenty-second, but I think by May first is when we have to. We'll present a budget to the finance committee, I've targeted May eighth, we're still, we'll need to confirm that date. I think Tommy is June tenth. And then we, we will obviously continue to have discussion and see what happens with this state, state budget. We'll go to any questions?
I'll just start, Mr. Connolly, thank you so much for all the hard work. This is amazing, you do an amazing job. And we've, we've done multiple versions of finance planning team of this and you are so quick and efficient and great. So just for everything, I think the three of us should ask questions first, then we'll open up to everybody else. I just have a couple, I have one logistical question first. So within the numbers, you have in, with the forty million, six seventy-nine, you have in two hundred and fifty thousand from the kindergarten revenue offset? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. But then when you, when you cut it out in the level services, you've cut out the two hundred, do you keep the two fifty in there?
So it's a loss of, it's a, I guess I would describe it by it's a loss of two hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue in total. Because we, right now, it's four fifty.
Okay, so you're, you're still, so even in the level service column, you're still, you're, you're still putting two hundred and fifty thousand of the, of the revolving account into there?
The level services column, that, the offset should be funded at four fifty. Where in the, in the modified level services, the offset is being funded at, at two fifty.
Using, using the funds.
Using the reserve.
Using the reserve in the, in the level services, are you using any reserve?
A little bit, a little bit of the reserve.
A little bit.
Because the, the tuition is not, is not increasing, is not.
More typical over.
That's what I was wondering, I just, I didn't know if it was so as clean as a takeout that you, because in the modified, you have a two hundred thousand dollar expense.
Correct.
And then, you know, an increase, and then in the level services, you have zero. So I just didn't know if you were doing this during these meetings.
So with the, with the reduction that we've been doing over the last few years, we've been using a little bit of the reserve every year. Because we're not charging four thousand, we used to be, to keep it at the four fifty.
I know, well, that doesn't happen. What I was, what I was also going to say is just, just for the public here to understand where we're at. And just because we're, we're a little bit ahead of the game on where we normally are at this point in time. Because we are talking about proposing two different budgets or a budget with an override in a town meeting. And the, so normally, we don't have a, a very solid revenue number. But I think it's fair to say we have a very solid revenue number right now from finance planning team. And so with that revenue number, which is already doing a, a lot of things to try to generate additional revenue. The budget that was just presented has a one point nine million dollar deficit. If you eliminate the additional positions, not the SR, not the SR, not the level services ones, but the third box of four hundred and seventy-six thousand of the new positions. And you do not reduce the kindergarten fee, that brings it down to a one point two million dollar deficit. So talking about one point two and one point nine. The one point nine is this budget, the one point two is no additional positions and no, and still twenty-five hundred dollar fee for full day kindergarten. We do not believe that the revenue number is going to change. I think, as you can tell, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a fairly solid number. That's where it's going to be. And realistically, that's probably higher than it. There's some, there's some additions, there's some one-time funds only this year, doing a couple of adjustments, so.
The only reason it would change would be after our entire process, if states does something different.
Right.
And that would be minimal.
Right, so the deficit we're looking at without the new positions and without reducing kindergarten is one point two million.
Correct.
And, yeah, question?
That was my question. That was my question, my, my other question is, you sort of were touching on, is just, and you guys on the finance team are more privy to this, I've never been present for, and I don't know if anyone has, for an override?
No, the last override was two thousand and five.
So are we voting on a budget that's like, are we voting on a, a budget that's not feasible? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, how do we vote on a budget that we're hoping to get additional costs for?
I, I think what the goal is here is we have to go in to town meeting with a budget that we can pay for without an override. So we have to cut one point nine million dollars. So we have to cut 1.9 million dollars from the budget that was just presented. We have to go in with that.
And then we present another option.
And then there'll be another option that says, or if we do an override, and we have to still talk about that at the finance planning team about how much the override is, essentially it would be raising the tax levy, we probably, the talk that we've been having so far is raise it higher than we need, so that we don't do this every year, and then you can tax a little bit more for a few years, probably four, five years, we could probably tax a little bit more than the two and a half percent, so that we don't have to do this every year. But we have to go in with a budget that is balanced with the revenue that we have. And so that would mean cutting 1.9 million from the budget that was just presented here, and identifying what that is. I mean, very, very early on, if you just look at the 1.2 million deficit, we're talking about raising some fees, cutting some expense lines, and still cutting probably about 15 positions to balance the 1.2 million. Pretty direct, but, but I think that's where we're at right now. And we have to talk a lot about what those positions are and have some meetings and get into that, but, but again, that will be done here, we'll be talking about the types of positions, things like that, I mean, teachers versus adjustment counselors, paraprofessionals versus SRR funds, versus, or SRR position versus whatever, but that's sort of where we're at right now. And, and again, the only other thing that I will put on the record here, because some people will say, well, why are you doing what you're doing? I think the school committee has made a commitment to try to have a fair contract with the teachers, and we did the same thing with the paraprofessionals, 1,200 people signed something that got presented to us, some people in this room signed those things, and they said they wanted more than we've given in the past, and we heard them, and we settled the contract with the paraprofessionals. I don't think anybody here has, has an appetite to have a strike, and I don't believe that even if you had teachers go on strike, you're going to win at the end of it, and so we're doing what we have to do, and I hope that the town ultimately will support more revenue. But I mean, just looking at some of the slides that Mr. Connolly put up there, if you look at the fixed cost increases over the last four years, it's 22%. You know, revenues go up two and a half percent. You can't have expenses go up 22% in a year, revenue goes up 10%, you know? And we've done some things to mask those problems in years, and SRR funds helped for a few years, and it's just, it's a systemic problem, as you said.
Yeah, I think all, all of the funding that came out of COVID went a long way over four years to mask all those issues on the school side, for sure. And that, that is just, this is the end of it.
We, we discussed this day was coming.
Yeah, oh yeah, we, you know, we made a decision to do it that way, other districts took some of the, some of those, that money, the SRR money and other, other funds, and did one-time things with, with them. I think our decision process was, we had, you know, really critical needs somewhat driven by COVID and the experiences of our students, and so we needed to, we felt like we needed to get those positions, and even if we only, we knew they were, the funding for them only existed for three or four years. And that was a choice we made, our district made, others did differently. So we, you're right, we went with the eyes open, we knew what we were doing, but now we're hoping that we can continue those positions. Right? Any questions?
I, I just, I just have a, just a little, a little question, it's, I know there's so many pain points here, but you're, when, Mr. Connolly, when you do your math on the enrollment-driven new positions, you said it's mostly at the elementary level?
Correct.
And is that, that you have your, lack of a better word, your wizard math way of figuring out how the, like, what the new enrollments, you look at, you look at, like, just trends, right?
Birth rates.
Birth rates. Does any of this, and I know we're just talking 2025, but we're, we're looking at potentially some bigger developments coming into town, especially with the recent overturning of the Elm Street development, that could be like upwards of 200 units.
Right.
We, how do you, what's your quick description of the math, like, if something like that's on the horizon, and how do you, if you have 200 new units, what calculation do you use?
I have to, there's, I have to kind of work that out with the town planner. Generally, we kind of work and try to come up with a, an amount per unit, or amount that we would want to add based on historical trends. We have the history with that, with the Elmwood development, right? Right, so we will look at that. So this, the enrollment projections that were presented in the fall. Oh, we have history. Did, some of the newer developments that were sort of uncertain at the time, were not reflected, that's why we kind of redo it every year.
Right, and you figure, it's just one of those things that you kind of brace yourself for.
Right. So those, some of the projected declines or increases could change. You don't have your budget book on, on your laptop, do you? That has the slide in it? I'd love to throw the slide up there, but. Of the enrollment? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's on the website. Yeah, I can do that. Because it's, it's not just this year, it's, the projections are going up.
Right, and then also, if we're, if we're asked, if we're looking for an override, then like, planning for the future?
I would say it's fair that the projections slide doesn't include a possible development at this.
Right, yes.
It doesn't include that. That, correct. It includes some assumptions.
Birth rates and trends. Right.
Some other pieces.
Typical move-ins.
Typical turnover of homes with new, new students coming in with school-aged children, new families.
Yeah.
Overall, the comment I'll make that Ridge has heard about 17 times already, and the school committee has heard 12 times. Over, most years, we try to go to town meeting with a balanced budget. That's the purpose of the finance planning team, is to work together, so we're not fighting with the select board about, you know, who gets what, we work together collaboratively to try to figure out, you know, to try to get a, a budget. And the problem this year is not just the school side, just to be clear, town and school side, the expenses are higher because of a lot of factors that are outside of our control. And so my personal position has been, and I believe the finance planning team agrees now, is we should not make the level of cuts that we would have to make to balance this budget without first asking the town if they would rather support an override or these cuts. Like, last year, we had people upset that we cut a couple positions, which is fine, I mean, you can be upset, you know, and we thought we should add this position and not that position, and so that's fine, but cutting something like 15 positions is more than I think we should do without the town, you know, having a say in that, and that's where I, I think people are fairly unanimous on that, and then the question of whether or not to support it will be the next question. And so personally, I will support it, I'll advocate for it, I will do everything I can to try to get it passed, because a lot of the positions that are going to be cut are the things that in the last 10 years, the school committee has worked on trying to add to the school district, and, yeah, but we'll have more conversations about that afterwards, but just understanding that's the approach here, and why we're talking about an override so openly, because I just don't think we should make the level of cuts we need to make to balance this budget without asking people.
I agree.
And then just to clarify, to my memory, the work really cuts, we had attrition, jobs not replaced, restructuring.
Yeah.
We didn't move forward with some of the key positions like the adjustment counselors, whereas this year, if we were to just lose those SRR positions, there would be definitely cuts.
Right, so, so we didn't eliminate, we, no one lost their job last year, right?
I don't believe so.
No one lost their job, but there were, there was fewer FTEs.
Yeah.
There are fewer FTEs this year than there were last year.
There were absolutely reductions in FTEs, for sure, I'm just making it clear.
There are fewer.
This year, though, we'd be talking about.
Accounting cutting jobs.
Which nobody wants to do.
Right, yeah. Digital learning wasn't, we didn't replace, there was no reduction in any of those FTEs.
No, right, that, that position.
And the models stayed the same, the hours stayed the same for the kids, there was no reduction in program, but the greater point is, this year, is a different conversation. We get asked that a lot, because it's difficult every year, right? We, we try to communicate that this year is a 1.9 million now, and we're at the final place that we usually get to in, in May.
Yeah, but I think, I think, I think it was still like, FTE, I think we're like one and a half short, smaller, fewer this year than last year.
Definitely, definitely FTE reductions, yeah.
Mr. Connolly, lead us to the enrollment.
Well, this, the question about enrollment projection, so again, we go through this process every year based on the information that we have, we look at census data with birth, birth rates, and we look at known developments, known trends, and turnover of homes, and just potential of new families moving in with school-aged children, and we try to come up with a progression ratio for students that may survive from one year into the next, over averages of like either five, three, five, or 10 years. And then that's how we build these projections. Now, something like a large development that could come in with families of school-aged children, we would want to change what those ratios that we come up with, because that would certainly have an impact on outer years of these projections, that's why we go through this process each fall.
And, and looking out three years in general, they're pretty, they're pretty close, right?
Pretty close, correct.
Obviously, the farther out you get, it's.
Correct, yeah, exactly. They're most accurate in the three, any five, 10 years.
They're, they're very accurate, honestly, it's, it's pretty surprising.
Pretty much less than 1%.
Like you said, wizard math.
Yeah, it is, it's pretty good.
You know, it goes by the law, what happened in the past, what happened in the future, you look at those trends.
I just have one more comment, and before, I'm sure people have questions, I hope they do. And, and that is, the, the areas where we are, just run things as tightly as we, as we can, I mean, the increase to instructional expenses and operations and maintenance are 0.11 and 0.1, and 0.15%, you know, in this environment, that's, you know, I'm amazed it's not a higher increase. And, and the other number that was in the presentation that I just always refer back to is the, the district level salaries at 2.9% of our budget, which is, as Mr. Connolly said, is lower than the average, is the statewide average of, of just under 4%?
Correct, yes.
And I suspect is lower than, probably quite a bit lower than the, than the median as well, although I guess I don't know that. So when people ask us, why can't you cut elsewhere, there, there's just no room to cut in, in some of those, I mean, first of all, the percentage, the total percent of the budget is really small, and, and the increases are very small as well, so. That was my last comment.
I mean, public have comments or questions? Yes.
Why?
For, for the reference, you state your name and, Katie should have too, your name and address so that Cindy has it.
Sure, Jennifer Leathers, 28 Harrah, Hawaii. I just have two questions, why are we below the state average?
For district administration?
For salaries.
For, for, just for district administration?
Oh, okay.
So at, at the district level of.
And how do our teacher salaries compare to surrounding districts?
So I'll, I'll say generally, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we always try to, to be competitive with districts that we might be competing with to, to, to hire staff, so, you know, I think in the last few years, we've maintained a pretty competitive position. I don't have numbers, percentages, I don't know if you guys have more specific information, but that's always a key part of our negotiations when we enter, ahead of going into a negotiation on a contract, is, is, you know, Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly, looking at where we stand in regards to our neighboring, you know, the, the similar districts in, in the area, and, and making sure we're competitive. So I, I think we're, we have been able to maintain that over the years.
Okay.
We, we always look to be in the top three or four, sort of in comparison, and.
Top three or four out of?
Out of, out of the comparables.
So out of like the 10 or so comparables, yes. Anything?
And just to, there's less administration, so there, there's less positions.
Okay.
It's not that the salaries for those positions are not comparable in the same way, those are within the market, but there's just less administration positions.
And then, just to, I guess it's more of a process question, if it goes to town meeting and there are 15 positions being proposed to be cut, are those positions listed out, or is it just 15 positions?
Well, there's a lot of work still to be done.
Yeah, I'm saying by the time it gets to town meeting.
I think, my, my anticipation would be, maybe we don't say it's Mrs. Rudolph that's being cut, but we would say at the elementary school, it'd be four classroom teachers, and the average class size will go from 18 and a half to 22 and a half. That would be my guess, but.
The classic size will go.
Yeah, and that would be part of a presentation, not part of the actual budget, which would just be a little more general, I think, right?
Yeah, and you can see the cost center that they're coming out of, so you see the structural.
But I would caution, I think for the public hearing, we'd probably be at that place, more generalized. Depending on the positions, I have deadlines of May 1st for professional status teachers and June 15th for non-professional, and so we, I don't know that it can be that ambiguous and then we decide after.
They would know. Well, we don't have, yeah, they would probably.
Whether we would, whether we would talk about it at the town meeting, it would be required, we'll need to make, we, you know, make, make those calls according to those deadlines. It could be no, because people, because the individuals.
But a couple of other quick things, just to point out, number one, the school budget is very different than the town budget, the town budget, everything is line by line. So like, if you want to move at a police officer, you have to lie at it in whatever line, they can't move money from one line to the other. The school budget is a one-size-fits-all that is bonus.
It's more functional.
And so we could go in and vote a budget, and then if there's, if you need a new math teacher and, you know, whatever, you, you can move somebody around within that budget, so the dollar on is a dollar amount. Some districts just give that, Mr. Connolly, as you've seen, gives a lot of detail, like, there's a 200-page book that he gives us that shows every line item in there. We don't have to do it that way, but we do it that way, and so there, sometimes it's like, okay, we're going, going to identify $50,000 of cuts or whatever, but we will have some data, I, again, I don't know that I would personally, again, this is where we have to decide still how we do the presentation, but I don't know that we want to get up and say like, say, this is Rudolph, you know, and as opposed to just overall talking about the level of cuts and where they're from. And then, yeah, the other points were on the district administration, I think the point is, Mr. Connolly, Dr. Daley, Mr. Queen do a lot of work, and a lot of other districts have board administrators.
And others, yes.
Yeah, they, that, yeah, that's correct, but the people that are here in the, the administration have a lot of work, and a lot of districts, I think, some of the arguments I've heard in other districts is, they have too many administrators, and that's why they need an override. I think the point here is, we have 25% fewer, we're spending 25% less, and that's where we're at. And just to give some numbers, I mean, the last teacher's contract, which we can't talk about because it's published, there was an 8% raise over three years, that's what it was, and we thought that that was fair, that kept them in line with neighboring districts, but a lot of districts have closed union, have closed negotiations since that last contract was negotiated, and we believe that we've fallen behind that. And so I think it's fair to say we don't think 8% over three years is going to get it done again, and that's sort of where we're at, and the goal is, and what we've seen in the last couple of years is when we post positions, when you used to have 15 people applying for a position, you get two or three now. And the concern is, if you don't pay within, you know, the average range, you're going to get fewer applicants, you're going to get weaker applicants, you're not going to retain your teachers, you're going to become a, you know, a stepping stone to another better district, and as a school committee member, I would hate to see that happen. That's where we're at.
T.C.A.R. Hello, 13 B. M. Street.
There you go.
Just one comment, I think that as these numbers and figures are getting rolled out, I think it will be important to be able to say, we're talking five teachers at this school, we're talking six teachers at that, we want people to care about this, and see what the actual application to like, what about my kid's class size, is there anything they care about? And I think, and I don't know if this is something like the finance committee will work on, or who, but I think getting that, like, your house is worth $700,000, and your taxes will go up by X, having those concrete numbers to share with people, no one wants to go and vote for a tax increase, I certainly don't, but if you're going to tell me that my first grader is going to have 25 kids in this class, I'm, I'm going to vote for you, right? So I just think that having like a, a pretty holistic communication strategy here, making sure that especially our elected officials, I know town staff and town employees are going to be a little bit more restricted in how they can kind of promote this and advocate for this, but I think just like looking to you guys for leadership on this, and like, it's very clear what we will lose here versus like keeping our modified level services and keeping what we're already very accustomed to, like, make sure that folks, especially the, the people like me, the parents who have kids, and. and across the whole school district, that they feel like here's where you're going to see the pain. I think that's going to be, I think it's going to be a tough vote either way, but I'm hopeful that all the work that you've done here, Mr. Connolly, and all of the kind of very clear-cut numbers we're seeing, and like, people know this. They know everything's more expensive. It is not, like, no one should be shocked by this. And these increases over the last four to five years that we're dealing with, they're humongous. And like, the 2.5% is not keeping up, so.
Agree completely.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things on the teachers also they have to consider is, even if you say we need, we could take four third grade classrooms at the batch and do it in three, that doesn't necessarily mean that that teacher is the one that's lowest seniority. And so, that's the other thing to factor into this, where a teacher may be bumped out of that class, but may have seniority in another area. And so I think that's where you also get into challenges in identifying exactly what's happening. I completely agree. I mean, I plan on being vocal, the problem is not that people come to here. I'll be vocal in other areas, I will talk to other people. And we need, we need parents like you to be vocal as well. We'll give you that information. A lot of what we're talking about right now at finance planning is, first, we needed to figure out what the revenue number was. That's what we've sort of gotten to a lot earlier than we ever get to. The next one is, if we ask for an override, how much to ask for? Because do we ask for $4 million to try to get everything we wanted more? Do we ask for enough to just do level services? Do we have to ask for enough to do modified level services, or somewhere in between? That's what we have to figure out. And we have to remind everybody, this is not a school budget override. This is a town budget override. The municipal side, I've been going to some of those hearings as well, they need money too. They need new firefighters, they need to settle, resolve multiple contracts. They need tree cutters, they need, you know, more people for youth services and elder services. Like, there's a lot of need that, because they have fallen behind as well. And, you know, and I have been as vocal at those meetings that I have at these meetings because it's not a school issue, it's a town issue.
So I have a follow-up question to that, just again, being new to the override. So the override, you say it's a town vote. So does that mean if you want to preserve the school budget, you also have to, your vote, it's one or, it's all or nothing?
Yeah, so the town has always presented what could be known as an omnibudget.
Yeah.
At town meeting, which is the combined municipal and school budget. And I believe what we've talked about is that there would be a budget vote that actually both the town and the school would have two budgets in that, in that one vote, with the understanding that if, and then there would be another vote for the override. And the understanding is that if the override passes, then you get Budget B, but if it doesn't pass, you get Budget A. The other thing to remember is that beyond that, there would also be a special election. So there's actually two events that need to happen, a vote at town meeting and then a, on the override, on the debut event, and then a ballot question, a special election as well, so.
And a simple process.
And the other thing to just point out on that is, we have a working arrangement that isn't formalized where, well, let me go back a step. Revenue comes in, we talked about above, like, revenue comes in off the top, before revenue is split up, certain expenses are taken out. After those expenses are taken out, then there's a split. We've had a working relationship where it's about 2/3 of the schools and 1/3 of the municipal side. It doesn't have to be that way. Theoretically, it could be 75% of the schools and 25% of the municipal side. We are not proposing that, because my point is, I think the municipal side has just as big of needs as we do. And so, I don't think this is a, well, the schools need more money, so they need to put more money just on that side of the problem. I think both sides need a little bit more. So we haven't talked about trying to change how to divide up the money or anything like that. I don't want this, I don't think this should become a, you know, for schools versus police and fire, you know? Like, I think everybody has those needs, and that's what we've been working with in the finance planning team, is to sort of look at it, if we kept the split and if X amount were now, again, maybe the split changes slightly in the future, it's changed in the past, but, again, so you theoretically could do it that way and just say we want more on this side, but that's not what we've been talking about. We've been trying to, we've been trying to clarify what the needs are on both sides first, figure out how much revenue we have, figure out what our budget requests are, figure out what would be cut, then talk about, okay, what do we want? Because we're not trying to get everything, because there's going to be some people that don't vote for an override at all, there's going to be some people that vote for it no matter what it is. There's a lot in the middle that are going to want to hear the specifics of it and want to make sure that it's not extravagant. We've already cut the hot tub for the superintendent's office, so that's fine.
One more question, question of the vote. Is this something that, so both for the town meeting vote and for the special election, is this a simple majority vote, or is this a 2/3s in either case? Does anyone know?
I believe the town, the town meeting vote is a super majority. I don't remember if it's 2/3s.
So I don't know 100%. Select Board Member O'Leary has said it's a majority vote. I don't know if that's
Did that presentation, I can see.
Yeah, I, they had said it was
How hard we got to work with this?
Yeah, they had said it's a simple majority, but I don't know if that's true.
Dr. Daley? That's true of a budget. A budget is a simple majority.
A majority. The ballot vote would be 2/3s.
That's always been my understanding.
The ballot would be 2/3s, or the, and the town meeting would be override.
The override. The ballot, I think, would be a simple majority.
Simple majority for the ballot and, yeah.
It's been so long since we've done one.
Yeah. There's a website out there that I'm going to look through as well. I found the other day where you can see all of the override votes successfully and unsuccessful in Massachusetts for whatever period of time. And I look back, and the last successful budget override was in 2005 in North Reading. There were a couple of other ones in 2006 and 2007. I don't think anything's been put up for a budget override. There obviously was an override for the school here and things like that.
One of the things, Dr. Daley and I attended a webinar put on by the Mass Association of School Committees on this topic, because a lot of communities are facing this, right? So they're offering up some experience and information about it. And one of the things they talked about is how important it is to engage people in the community. In fact, it's almost critical, because there's, as you mentioned, there's a limit to what the town employees, but there's even a limit to somewhat, to what we can do, especially because we're limited by open meeting law. You know, we can't be in a meeting, the three of us or five of us together advocating for something like that. So community involvement is going to be critical, whether it's, you know, whether we do a traditional organizing or rely on our networks and social media. I don't know how it's going to play.
Yeah, and again, either of us are up, and we can't necessarily say, well, the school committee supports this if it's just me speaking, or it's Red speaking.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
Tim Solomon, 17 meeting room. If we, I don't know your definition of level service, because of parents, right? My kid's an 18 kid classroom, level service means next year they're an 18 person classroom. But I think that would resonate with most of the town. So if we assume we plan out an override vote, multi-years, Don does his math, his math is impeccable. Capacity-wise, what room does the district have from a facility perspective to maintain a classroom of whatever, I think we're 18, 19, whatever we are? How many years can we sustain that? So we go improve a four-year budget with an override, can we sustain that?
Well, when you look at the enrollment, when you look at the enrollment, we're only talking about, you know, 100 kids at the elementary level. So I think probably someone will, but we are tight already, because there's already been some things that were pushed out. You know, there are some programs that were revenue-generated programs that we don't have the space to offer anymore, so they've been pushed out. And the other big concern is the modulars of the little school and the hood school are past their useful life. And so, the thing we don't want to always talk about is, we have to replace them at some point or do an addition onto a school, so that we can then do that. And so it is a very real concern. I don't think we're at risk of, for the core programs. I think the bigger question is for like, if we wanted to expand pre-kindergarten or something like that. Dr. Daley, any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry.
Spatial capacity, space capacities, if we, if we can't keep funding it, like, do we, with the increase of enrollment for the next few years, are we still going to be okay with, if we have the, if we have the budget to keep the teachers, do we have the classroom to keep the enrollments still on?
Yeah, I think at a certain point, we will have to look at space facilities based on, you know, I think you just mentioned the modulars, looking at that over time. And if there's another development in different places, we're going to have to help the space as well.
Yeah, we all, developments for sure, that would, if there's more than what we were just talking about there, I think you get into a bigger issue than 100 people in the next year.
And the enrollment projection is obviously trending up. Our enrollment history of the last 10 years, we're at a little bit of a low right now. We did have some big cohorts pass through over the last five to 10 years. So we're roughly 200 or plus below. So presuming that we were able to successfully accommodate them 10 years ago, we've got that sort of front.
And where you see it is, like, it's not going, if you have, you know, 18 kids in a classroom and two more kids move in, you're not talking about an additional class. But if you have, you know, 22 kids in a class and three or four more come in, now you're talking about another section. Like, people that should be most concerned are like, if you have, if there's 70 kids, you know, and right now it's classes of 17 and 18, that can be divided by three just as easily as it can be divided by four. And right now, we try to divide it by four, but we could divide it by three if we need to. And I don't think anybody here wants to, but that's what we're talking about. Yeah. And it's, you know, and high school and middle school are harder to do. This is a challenge we had last year, when we were looking at how to balance last year, because a lot of course, courses you have to offer, but do you offer fewer AP classes? Do you offer fewer electives? Like, that's not where I think we want to go. I mean, we added at the middle school, computer science and foreign language in the sixth and seventh grade. I think they're great programs, but it's one of the last things that was added. And so I think those are the decisions and the discussion we have to have.
They're talking specifically about that at this time, but yeah.
Right, no, but I'm saying like, if you're, when you're looking at like, at a program, like, we're approving programs, would that be what we look at? Okay, we did this last year, so, yeah. I mean, we're not saying what it is yet, we're just, yeah.
They're very important aspects of your advocacy, a family that committed to a four-year investment, right? To say, hey, we thought about facility space, we thought about AP classes, we thought about the arts. Where, you know, I think a parent would be really upset if they voted for an override, and then the music class goes away because they have to put classroom in there, and then the learning labs, right? And if we can reassure people, I think that's going to go a long way towards, hopefully, a successful one. I think there's a lot of work to go, every element of it.
Yep. Good discussion, you guys should come every week.
Select Board was shorter.
Every year.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know why anybody wants to run for this position, but, you know, thank you. I think everybody does.
They're not always this long.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments?
Just thank you again, Mr. Connolly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. More to come? Okay, moving on the agenda, not too much left, people, you guys do say. Routine matters, did the minutes get posted?
They did.
Okay, I didn't look at them, so I'll read them.
We can pass over to the next.
Let's do it next time.
You want to do it next time, right? Okay, we'll pass over a minute's budget update, Mr. Connolly.
Yeah, so in terms of fiscal year '24, financial activity through essentially the end of February, is what the report requires. I think there's not a lot of new drivers or new information from last month's report. I think we continue to see some increases in the special education side to, yes, either on tuition side or the contractual services side. As I mentioned last time, we are in a position where we can handle that within budget, based on the position we put ourselves with prepaying tuitions and so forth at the end of last fiscal year. But it's just something that, as you saw tonight, is going to carry over into next year, and we have to kind of be aware of that, continue to monitor those trends. We've had, we have had some unexpected maintenance of building expenses rise, we need to replace some boiler equipment, some other system repairs at the elementary school. We've addressed that through extraordinary maintenance and so forth, that some of those lines are certainly being expended. On the personnel side, I think we're certainly all within budgeted months. We have experience, need to fill some leave of absences. In some cases, higher trends this year than in previous years, but we've been able to do that all within the budget. Food service program continues to perform well. And I think through the first eight months, as we get into March and we approach the final conclusion of the third quarter of the fiscal year, I think we, although we've had some anticipated expenses, as typically the case, we're still in good standing to kind of approach the fourth quarter of the year.
Very much, Mr. Connolly. Any questions on it? No questions on it? Staffing, Dr. Daley?
Thank you, just a quick update here. We have a few new positions. We have Jenna Quattrusi as the building substitute at the batch on the school, Olivia Salazar, long-term substitute, grade one position at the little, Joshua Ellis, teacher science at the middle school, and Ryan Smith as a building substitute at the middle school high school.
Thank you very much, welcome everyone. Days of donations, kind of a handful here. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from, the first one?
4406.
Sorry, I was in the second one. Let me start again. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $440.68 from the Special Olympics Massachusetts aid to use towards the polar plunge fire detail at the high school.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, passes, 3-0.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $625 from the Special Olympics Mass to use towards the bocce tournament lunch at the high school.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Oh, sorry, I'm already on to this.
That and I, yes.
That was an I.
Passes 3-0.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $600 from Vicki Nicolopoulos to be put towards the boys' basketball team fund.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 3-0.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Larry Canolanga and team parents to be put towards the girls' basketball team tournament bus.
Second.
Second, discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, passes 3-0. Thank you, everyone.
Is that line item of all the donations, it goes into there?
Yes, no grants, we did the overnight triple approval, moving on to subcommittee updates, finance planning team met. I think the only thing I want to add to this is just some of the, what we did on the revenue discussion. And so, the, within the numbers with, for the revenue, there's a couple of things. Like, in years past, there's been a debt, I call it a debt exclusion, number of like 1.3 million. Basically, it's free cash from years before. That's been increased to 1.6 million for this year. That is something that if we use more of it, there's not going to be as much free cash next year. And so it's something that will eventually go away, we can't just keep using that over and over. Second thing that we changed, we put more investment income into the revenue. I think we budgeted $750,000 of investment income. And what did we do last year? 500 or 300? It was 300 or 500 from last year, so we increased that, and then
Yeah, that makes sense.
The other big issue, well, a couple of different effects, was the health insurance number is much higher than expected. I mean, health insurance was going up. Originally, it was going to be like 14 and a half percent. They negotiated it down to like 12.1 or 12.5%. And they have, we have this very unique PFA arrangement that I'm not going to try to go into here, but we can essentially use some of the money in that fund to buy it down. So we're going to buy it down to an 8 and 1/2% increase, so that's what's being put in there. But they also are going to look at truing up the extra contributions, and it's a one-time adjustment we can make that benefits the schools about $400,000. That'll lead to few, that'll lead to less free cash being generated, because it's a more accurate kind of what we're using, because in the past, contributions were going in, it was going over free cash, now there'll be less going in. But we get a one-time bump that helps us. So the bottom line is, we've talked a lot about what the revenue plan for FY '25 is, and I think we're all in agreement that it's, it's still fairly conservative, but it's a little bit more aggressive, definitely more aggressive than we are at this point in time, but I think it's a pretty true number. But that's where we spent a lot of the time on last meeting. I think there will probably be a joint meeting of the school committee and select board soon, and probably the finance committee as well. and probably the finance committee as well, to go through all these numbers. So if you ever wanna go through it even more detailed, you can have that. That was the finance planning meeting. Anything else I missed, Rich?
No, I think that's good.
Athletics upcoming event on March 5th.
I'm sorry, I need to find the email with the agenda. Do you want us to start, Dr. Bailey?
Sure, we talked, you know, updates on the winter sports conclusion, the spring sports. We talked about some improvements at the facilities for the baseball field. We did have that donation that came in a few months ago, and so we've started, obviously, on that field. This is sort of that next phase with the bleacher project, so we looked at some of the proposals that we had for that. We also talked about some other items, updating our golf cart, which with a great donation from the Hillview Fund. Some other projects involving some cleanup area down in that same general area, the entranceway that goes to the football field. Trying to address that area as well. Talked about eighth grade override, eighth grade,
Alright, just charge the eighth grader for this.
Waivers for eighth grade students to play sports. We had a couple of areas for the spring. One that we definitely are gonna move, I believe, boys lacrosse.
Boys lacrosse and softball.
There's a second one that, yeah, is not necessarily going to happen, but we did apply for it just in case we needed it.
I was gonna ask that because I was on those, are they, is that unusual? I mean, if they're smaller class sizes or a little less participation in these sports?
Usually driven by numbers and for trying to promote the building of a team. When you have, sometimes, you know, those students aren't able to play varsity, right? So this is not about LeBron James being there and moving him up, right? But it's about building programs, so some of those eighth graders might be able to be part of a junior varsity team. And then you're sort of building the capacity of that team so that when they get up to that varsity level, they've had more years of playing.
I was just curious if we've seen declining enrollment overall in that program?
I would say in both.
Or do we have smaller class sizes that happen to be at that level?
I think it's a little bit, okay. And you're getting pulled for lots of different points, yeah.
I think the, I think the work on the baseball field is really good. We've obviously done a lot of work thanks to so many generous donations on the field. The infield looks amazing and has, because we completed that a couple of years ago. But this project they're working on now, which will use the $50,000 donation as well as other funds that they'll need to, that they'll need to raise one way or another to improve the seating, stands behind the back, so it's gonna be a good project.
Okay, fine art subcommittee met on March 5th at 3:15.
I was a very bad subcommittee member and I was driving.
Hold the tray, you were driving, yeah.
I was not in my usual, they're taking spite, space. There's an interesting discussion that I remember about the, like, the way that the, because the new positions would be decided, but.
Yeah, so I think that actually, that actually applies both to athletic side and the, and the, and the fine arts side. As part of our work we've done up to now, but also as part of our negotiations, we're working on a process where it's sort of an understood process of how to bring in, propose, and then perhaps do a pilot for a new either coach position or a new position on the fine arts or performing arts side, where we can avoid some of the confusion about, first of all, that it can be done in between contracts because previously, if it wasn't in, if a position didn't exist on a contract, we couldn't add it or it was difficult to add. But also, a process where the first year is going to be X, and we're gonna be looking for some data to, to show that it was successful, that we can move forward to the future years, and also what scale it should go on in terms of the stipend schedule. So, did I cover most of what was involved there?
You did, yeah. We talked about the Arts Cultural Vitality Index grant, the process that we're doing with that. There's also a focus group on arts education that teachers are setting up with the Department of Education to provide some feedback.
Yeah, we're very excited about that.
And
Well, both those brands.
We're going to give back to the community with that as well and share out. We have our arts, upcoming art shows that's going to start April 24th and continue through. There's a reception, April 25th, 6:00 to 7:30. Performing arts, obviously, all of the updates, honestly, that we shared earlier with Notorious. We also have the All-Town Band and Chorus Concerts coming up in early April as well. And I just wanted to note that we talked about, it impacts this group, but also the athletics, that the funding issues with just the fees not supporting themselves, the amount of the cost of the salaries and the fixed costs with coaches and athletics and referees and buses and the fees. So even within that subset of our larger budget, there's, there's gaps that are growing every year. We did talk about that, like, presented the athletic subcommittee about the offsets and the revenues.
And, and just since we have three more members of the public than we usually have, just sort of say that the athletic subcommittee, for many, many years, there's been an athletic subcommittee. We added a few years ago a fine arts subcommittee because performing arts are so important to North Reading as well. But you guys maybe want to talk about who's in that group and the point of it? Richard, wow.
Sure, so we did it because of that, but also because we started collecting a, a separate performing arts activity fee. And so that really brought it into equal level on those terms with the athletic department. So we felt like it was important to have a subcommittee for the fine arts and performing arts to sort of be on the same level as the athletic. And, and in that group are the, who's in the athletic one first? So the athletic is, consists of Mr. Johnson, the athletic director,
Pretendant.
So pretending to be Mr. Connolly, and then.
Typically, the high school principal, on occasion, it's the middle school principal as well, the director of facilities, Mr. Cantaglia. We also have Mr. Karuchi, who's there representing Hillview Hall of Fame, but also he was there as the building committee as well. We also have two school committee members, Parks and Recreation, Marty Tuppens there.
So it's really town law.
Lita Wines there, and it's a comprehensive group.
Okay, and then the fine arts are.
That one's a little more focused on, on high school and both, all the school personnel. Mrs. Kane is there, Mrs. Lister is there from their curriculum leadership positions.
Mr. Dexter.
Andrew Dexter, what's that?
Mestoke is there.
Yep, she's joined us this year.
Kane, did we say Mrs. Kane?
Mrs. Kane.
Ms. O'Brien.
And Ms. O'Brien.
Ms. O'Brien, yeah.
And Mr. Cooley.
And Dr. Bailey.
And Mr. Connolly.
So a lot, so basically the curriculum leaders and leaders in those sessions.
Anyway, just to make sure that there's no silos happening and that we know what's going on and everyone's kind of discussing what's going on. Okay, subcommittee scheduled, finance planning team, we're meeting every single week on Friday morning at 8:00 AM.
They just listed the next due, but you're right.
Yeah, every Friday at 8:00 AM or 8:15 AM, so that's fun. Policy subcommittee, March 12th at 1:00 PM, athletic subcommittee, May 21st at 12:00 PM, fine arts subcommittee, May 21st at 3:15 PM. Administrative report, Dr. Bailey?
I see, I see you're meaning, I see.
Let's see, I see.
I wasn't able to get the information, and I believe we're gonna reschedule our policy subcommittee.
Okay, and then, of course, CIPC, we have numbers soon, or like what we're getting?
So what happened with capital improvements is we ended up having every committee member rerank, revote and rerank everything, so we'll, we're gonna look at them and say.
Okay, did we do okay in the first vote or not?
The first vote, we were looking pretty good.
But we're not revoting?
Well, why are we revoting? Probably these three are five, maybe four, we're looking like it's gonna get funded.
Is that why people are objecting about?
I think what happened was more, it was more items on the town side changed because they updated on some of the grants that are available, so the subsidy amount's changed. And then they also decided to defer a few projects, so he just had his recent name. I don't think it changed a lot.
I just remembered, CIPC is, so there's a group that gets together, look at capital projects across the town. And so they all come together and the school will put in our capital projects and we rank them and sort of what we're looking for, which are, you know, higher-priced ticket items that are, you know, multiple year. So, you know, if you need, I don't know, like, the library had to, like, replace the stairs or whatever, things like that. And so they just put them in and then a group comes together and.
New vehicles, new, major repairs, like a roof or window repair or something like that.
Right, so Mr. Freedman and Mr. Connolly are representatives on the school side. And so we submitted that earlier in the year and we just wait to see what we get funded, so. Okay, thank you. Administrative report, Dr. Bailey?
Sure, just three components here. Family University, I want to thank Mr. Colleen for really coordinating with Dr. Englander. We had many more people sign up. We had about 95, I believe, sign up and register. I think we had 35 to 40 people actually attend, which is actually, it's a very good number. It's never easy to find a good evening with sports and activities in the spring. Dr. Englander presented on multiple topics. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that?
It was entitled "A Healthier, New Normal," kind of reviewing the data and research that she has found in the most recent past about students coming out of COVID and providing resources for parents to.
Is that available for viewing for people who are not able to attend live?
People that registered, I believe, received a coffee.
Did you send me an email?
It was very generous of her to allow that, so we will share. We can't, we can't post it on the website for those that registered.
Mr. Colleen did an excellent job too, because there were some questions at the end that Mr. Colleen had to narrow down. And my, my one child is already upset that I took his cell phone out of his room and put it in a bad room. And so it was one of the suggestions, but I thought it was a good suggestion.
Well, if you can do it.
Kids didn't seem to appreciate it quite as much, so.
Somebody should do that for me.
It's true, I know. I make my kids do it, but I'm not.
We have an upcoming presentation under the Family University umbrella, Understanding Our Differences, on April 6, 2024. That's the program we've spoken about here several times. It's a classroom program.
It's April 10.
April 10. Sorry, sorry. What night of the week is that? That's a weekday? The 6th, I think, is a Saturday.
Yeah.
April 10 is Wednesday.
I'll update that. And we, we are coordinating and working on programs coming up, Islamophobia, antisemitism, hate and bias incidents, and then there'll be some other opportunities as well. And again, our goal here is to have Family University as an ongoing series as opposed to a one-time, one-day event. Bias incident reporting form, this is something that's an outgrowth of our K-12 action team and our DEIB group, as well as our state schools group, is kind of coming from both areas. For many years, we've always had an anonymous reporting system for bullying, for any other issues. We have two, two methods. One is writing a letter to Mr. Colleen as currently the contact. The second process we've had for several years is through the P3 app that the police have had through the CIT, where people can make an anonymous message through that application. We heard quite a bit about people feeling that things might be under-reported and that having a more accessible anonymous system would possibly make it more inviting for people to report. So we are launching this, you know, unless there's any concerns tonight. We waited to launch this more publicly this week, maybe tomorrow. And it's a simple form that just allows people to report. You would go to Mr. Colleen and myself, you would then take it, process it, and work with the school administration. No discipline or action is taken based solely on anonymous report, but an investigation can begin and we are, we are able to use that information. Every search supports the need for an anonymous reporting system. Since the law in 2010, we've had to have that. We, our original intent was by making it harder, we, we wanted to discourage the anonymous reports and encourage everyone doing the right thing, following the plan, speaking to trusted adults, following the process. And I think it's worked well. We've had, we do have a substantial amount of communication, but we heard enough from stakeholders that they wanted to see this type of anonymous option through a simple online form. I don't know if there's anything to add to that, Mr. Bailey? And I don't know if there are any questions about it, but we did plan to, to share that out. I am hopeful that we are not going to get a flood of information that we have not, you know, I, I do think that we do have a good culture of reporting, but I'm sure there are things that we may not be aware of that this may open up.
Where, where is it posted?
Right now, it is, we did sort of a soft launch on the website.
At the district website or on each school website?
It is on the district website. It would now be on, our, our goal is probably to put it in the quick links, which is on every school website. And we would also do a, a blackboard to announce that it's there, which is something we didn't do with the quote-unquote soft launch. We did that more just to have it there for people that needed it, that were bringing it up. But we wanted to roll it out in a little bit larger capacity. Any thoughts or?
No. Was that reasonable?
The last part is just the Student Opportunity Act presentations. I sent a, a communication to everyone with a survey attached. The request is that people, to the extent that they're able to, look at our district strategic plan, also the current Student Opportunity Act plan, as well as a tool for analyzing student outcomes, use that information to come up with questions and ideas and feedback for us, and then to complete a form. We're looking to collect information from that form by Wednesday, March 20th. We are having two sessions. We had one this morning that Mr. Buckley mentioned. That's with my superintendent's parent advisory council, which is made up of the PTO parent organizations in each school, as well as the various booster groups that are there as a part of that group. And I opened that up and invited anyone in the community that wanted to join. I don't believe we have any additional people there today. And then there's another one that's scheduled for the evening of March 18th, sort of a last push to, to remind folks that this opportunity exists. We've had about close to 50 or so responses so far, so. We opened it up and we're taking feedback on our district strategic plan as well. And I think the information is gonna be very helpful to help us continue to set our goals moving forward. I will be bringing that Student Opportunity Act plan to you for your approval at the meeting on March 25th.
Thank you very much.
To submit to the department by you. What's that?
Quick work?
Yeah.
Okay, no correspondence at this time?
No, just.
Future business, Monday, March 25th, we have a school committee meeting here. It's the North Reading Middle School presentation. We're gonna have representatives from the Northeast Vocational School here, and we're gonna talk about this Student Opportunity, Student Opportunity Act Plan. Monday, April 8th, we have the budget workshop at, at 5:00 PM. So that is in the superintendent's conference room, that's not on Zoom. So if anybody wants to come and be in the room, that's where we're gonna do the budget workshop. That's where we'll be probably discussing more how to get down to a balanced budget. That'll be also at 6:30 PM later that night, there'll be a public hearing on it. So there'll be discussions before and then in here, so if you are online paying attention at 6:30 PM, we'll be back here and we'll be talking about it in there. The next meeting is April 22nd. We still have time again for another budget workshop at 5:00 PM. Last couple of years, we haven't needed it. I don't know, we might need it this year. And then April 22nd, later on that night at 6:30, we have the budget vote. And we have the Turner Hood School presentation.
And that is at the Hood.
And that's at the Hood School, yes, so we'll be at the Hood School for the budget vote. Will that be live still?
It will not be.
It will not be live, so you do have to be in person if you want to be there. So.
So usually the, the public hearing is the one.
NorCam won't be live, but this will be live, right? The Google Meet will be.
I'll be streaming.
Okay.
Yep, we will, we will set up the option for that, yeah.
Good, excellent. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna head over to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
Second.
Motion away the second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
We'll make a few words.
Rich, say aye.
Aye.
Passing 3-0.